Thursday, December 27, 2018. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). Thank you, and again, good evening and welcome. I'm Madam Firth.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Katz.
Present.
Counselor Coulter.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Driggs.
Present.
All present.
Okay, again, thank you and welcome. This is Thursday, December 27, and by my count, our fifth meeting of this term of the council in just over a month. For those watching, this is a holiday weekend, or holiday week, I should say, so we did have a workshop on Saturday, the 22nd or something, but we did not meet on Monday, the 24th, because of the holiday. So we will go right through the agenda, and we have consent agenda items here with four items. We've got some minutes from November 26 and December 10. Those are the R minutes. We're receiving minutes from two boards. We have some correspondence from the Historical Semataries Commission and the November report from the Treasurer. Would anybody like to remove any of these for discussion?
Yes, I'd like to remove CA1.
Any other requests? Okay, I guess we should ask for a motion with the exception of CA1.
Still moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing, not all of us in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Katz?
These are the minutes for our meeting on November 26. It's probably a small thing, but on page three, it states that the Council President Coulter reflected my resignation from the Budget Committee has been received and accepted. I'd like to strike the "and accepted" just on the principle that you can't really not accept a resignation from an elected official.
I hope I said acknowledged, because that's what I meant to say.
I think that's what you said, but...
Is that...
That's fine.
Okay. Any objection to that correction? Okay. Any further discussion on 1A? CA1A is the regular session meeting minutes from November 26, which was our first of the five meetings I just mentioned. Okay. May I have a motion to approve S. with the correction?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing, not all of us in favor? Thank you. Okay, next we have our open forum, and we have eight folks who've signed to speak on the town solicitor. That is on the agenda, so normally I would suggest we, and I promise you, there will be opportunity for public comment on that.
That's my question. Will you be allowing public comment on that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Well, that, you know, we haven't adopted new governance rules, but so far, you know, subject to reasonable time constraints, we have a lot of public comment on every item. Is that okay? Okay, so we'll, more to follow on that. I know there's a lot of interest in that topic. Okay, so we have no public hearings, we have no licensing matters, and we have no appointments and resignations. So, Mr. Administrator, item E1, this has to do with engineering consulting services. We did work on this at our last regular meeting, and I think it's back for clarification. Jan?
Thank you. We did discuss this, you did discuss it. I indicated that I wanted to take another look at the fees that were listed in the attachment, and I'm glad I did. I spoke with Steel Engineering. They've lowered the fees for the purposes of this three-month extension. Instead of 126 per hour for the project man, 160 per hour for the project managers, 126. Instead of 145 for the project manager, it's 110. 120 for the engineer went down to 93 per hour, and 140 engineering tech went down to $77 per hour. So with that, I once again recommend that you approve this extension for three months.
Is there time for comment at all, Mr. President?
Yeah, the floor is open for discussion, questions, or motions. Thanks for following up on that.
I was just curious, on the $500 per meeting, is there any chance that they would accept an hourly fee up to the $500 max? I mean, what if they're in a meeting and they're here half an hour and then they're gone? That's a huge fee.
I raise the same question. I think it could probably be discussed more if needed. It turns out that typically, the matters that Steel Engineering is asked to speak on during hearing are, they come at the end of the meetings, because other people sort of get preference, so they can go home early. Which may or may not be a good idea, but it turns out they're there for a long time. Plus, they also charge for their travel. So when you look at the net benefit of perhaps doing it by hour, there is no real net benefit. But I understand and sort of agree with the question, and I raised it myself.
And did they not, they're a closed issue, or are they thinking about it?
They thought that based on their experience, this is the right fee to charge for the meetings, given the amount of time they typically spend, which actually apparently exceeds, you know, four or five hours on a regular basis.
Who usually comes? The senior or the project manager?
I think it depends a little bit, but it's certainly the project manager, sometimes the senior project manager as well.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I do have a question about that. Especially given that, you know, while the Planning Board normally meets once a month, sometimes they meet twice a month, and I do believe that Steer also may attend Technical Review Committee meetings. Is that correct as well?
I think as needed.
As needed. But, you know, a Technical Review Committee meeting doesn't usually last for more than an hour, and they're usually scheduled in the middle of the day. I mean, my understanding of the meeting attendance fee, which I believe, and I could be wrong, and Stu or Susan might be able to clarify this, is that when Steer was bidding for this, they agreed not to charge us a meeting fee. But at $500 a meeting, if you end up with two Planning Board meetings and a Technical Review Committee meeting, now it's at $1,500 a month, and I don't know that that's budgeted for that amount.
May I ask that the P A system be turned up a little louder? I'm likely not the only person that's hard of hearing. Can't hear the dialogue, please.
I'll try and speak more closely with the microphone, too. Anyways, the point is, at potentially $1,500 a month, I don't know that that much has been budgeted for engineering services between now and the end of the year. I don't believe it has.
It has.
Okay, so, is this still your recommendation, or, I mean, I know...
I don't mind going back again. I, you know, I raised a question with them. They thought, based on their experience, that they're spending an awful lot of time here, and it was well beyond what was originally expected when they agreed to waive the fee for meeting attendance.
Some meetings go rather long.
Yeah, they go for a fair long time. But I'm not the expert on that. There are some other people who know a lot more about Planning Board meetings in particular than I do.
This is the three-month extension, so...
It's a three-month extension, and I certainly, you know, don't mind going back and say, can we, you know, use that sparingly and reasonably, so that if, in fact, you are here for a much shorter period, that, you know, we don't charge that at the full fee.
What do we have left in that account? I'm trying to find it.
Is there any way, when Steer comes, that...
I think it's $830, if I'm looking at this right. Is it under Planning Boards? 7198? The professional, no, that's not it. Professional tech service? Stu, do you know what line this is under in the budget? Is it under your budget? I think so.
Susan Gill would probably...
Is Susan here?
No.
Jan, do you know what it's under?
No, I think it's the Planning Board, but I'm sort of being wondering myself where this all is coming from.
Yeah, I think it's, what I think it is, is professional tech services, which we budgeted $3,000, and there's only $830 left in that account. So one meeting, it's wiped out.
Just to clarify, a couple of points that people may not be aware of.
Just need your name for the record.
Stuart Hardy, Chair of the Tiverton Planning Board, 51 Summerfield Lane. And I'd just like to make two points. The first point is that the applicants, the developers who apply to the Planning Board and who, whose projects require the services of an independent consulting engineer in addition to their own civil engineer, they pay a fee to cover the costs of the civil engineer, of the consulting engineer that works for the town of Tiverton. And theoretically, the town should not be paying anything. It is the applicant fees that should be actually paying all of the fees for the consulting services that Steel Engineering does for the town of Tiverton. That's the first point I'd like to make. And we look at those fees every year, and Susan Gill in particular has been very good about this, to make sure that we're collecting enough to cover the cost to the town of Tiverton for engineering consulting. The second point I'd like to make is that we rely very heavily on our consulting engineer. Our own D P W Director comes to the meetings and is very helpful and contributes a lot. But the consulting engineer doesn't just contribute toward the end of the meeting. I'd like everybody to understand that he contributes virtually every agenda item, because in every agenda item, there are engineering issues that he will comment on, and in fact, will comment in writing typically. So I just wanted to make those two quick points, in case anybody...
Mr. President? So are we charging people who come to us right now? And where does that go? Does it go into the general fund, or does it go into a special account? It goes into a special account. What are we charging them now? Because what we're asking is, I think it's quite a hefty increase for people who want to develop properties. I'm not sure, but I think 500 is, what was it before, Jan?
Well, the contract that they had did not provide for it, as you mentioned. They, at one point, or as Counselor Hilton mentioned, they, in the beginning, waived the charge for attending meetings.
So...
Not anticipating how much time they would be spending.
So there wasn't a fee when people came?
Not for attending meetings, correct.
Just a point of clarification. It may be that the folks who are, and I'm not trying to say that we shouldn't be paying Steer fairly for their work, but to say that they were unaware of the time commitment, I have to disagree slightly, because the reason that we ended up with Steer is that the prior engineer switched firms, and she switched to Steer. And so when we went out to bid, she was very, very well-liked and very well-respected by the Planning Board, as well as the town administrator, and they won the contract. But, you know, there's no question that they were clearly aware of the time commitment that was involved in this when they, you know, agreed to take this without compensation for attending meetings. Now, that person has since been hired away by D O T and is very successful. She's not there anymore, but the firm was aware of the amount of work that was involved when they took this on.
But I'm confused right now, because Stu is claiming that we charge for professional services, and we really don't, because we don't pay for professional services for the meetings right now. Is that correct?
We...
Maybe we could say it better, we do charge, but...
We charge applicants usually when there is a need for a consulting engineer to do the inspections and whatever, instead of the town engineer. The applicants are asked to pay for that.
So, but, the town engineers have a charge for us?
We have not charged for meeting attendance, and so therefore applicants have not been asked to pay for that.
So are we going to ask applicants to pay for that now?
We can.
So we're going to ask them to pay an additional fee? I don't, I don't know.
Could I ask, I mean, if we're going back to Steer, to see again about the meeting fee, we can place constraints on when they can be called for some limit on time they can spend at a meeting for some price, or an hourly with a cap, so that might be an option we could consider. And I think before we vote on this extension, we should probably understand better the matchup of these fees with the contract we're voting on.
I agree.
Is there any limiting factor that makes it inadvisable to continue this to the next meeting?
I mean, that contract has expired, or is it, yeah, has expired, actually, as of the 14th, so, but they're not going to walk away just like that.
Well, I just think because there's an additional fee, we should figure out what, who's going to fund this, and how we are going to fund it for the rest of the year, because we still have a substantial amount of time left.
Does the Planning Board have a position on this, or, I'm going to put you on spot.
Well, we, we give you a fee schedule every year, and you vote on that fee schedule, so we make a recommendation. And state-enabling law allows all of the towns in Rhode Island to charge, to charge up to the amount that it actually costs the town. So, so we're not unusual, and in fact, when we check our fee schedules, we usually check with neighboring communities. And the last time we went through this exercise, we were about in the middle. Susan can correct me if I'm, if I'm speaking incorrectly, but we're in the middle of that, of that range of fees. So we're not out of line in any respect. And we've been very sensitive not to turn this into a profit center for the town and try to make money from developers, but rather just have developers cover the costs that they are charging to the town, so that taxpayers don't have to pick up that burden.
Sorry, I should have been more clear. I just meant on the fact that this is, the contract's expired, or this is just three months. I mean, if we push this off, is that going to be okay?
We will need, we will need Steer Engineering at our January 8 meeting. Otherwise, several applications that are pending and that we need to make findings and approve, one is a preliminary plan, one is a final plan, won't happen, because we do need the, we do need the input of our consulting engineer. So we need somebody at our January 8 meeting. But I'm, but I'd be happy to talk to Steer Engineering and make sure that, I know that the consultant that we've been working with, that we work with most often, his name is Joseph Cardello, who's very, very good. I can talk to him, make sure he understands the conversation we had tonight, and that they'll, they'll cover us until, until you folks have a chance to decide, to take a look, a good, hard look at the numbers and make a decision.
Jan, do you feel that they will attend the January meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Because I just think an increase of $500 per meeting, someone has to pay for this. And I'm not sure I want to put in on the burden of people coming.
I agree.
With applications, because their fees are already pretty big, especially if it's a larger development.
When's our next meeting?
Maybe third time will be the charm. Okay, so we have a joint workshop on, if I have this right, Monday, January 7, and then we have our next regular meeting on Monday, January 14. So, I guess that's what we'd be looking at.
You pull a microphone closer to your mouth, please.
I apologize. So, we have a joint workshop on Monday, the 7th of January, and then the next council regular meeting is Monday, January 14. So I guess the question here, do you want to see a formal vote, or just let it pass by?
I would suggest the 14th.
Okay, all right, very well.
And could, could we, just for information purposes, at that meeting, possibly know how other communities are paying? I mean, everybody's got a consulting engineer. So are they charging a flat-rate fee for meetings? Do they charge hourly? You know, I don't know what other communities do, and I'd be curious if it's possible to know that, too.
Okay, so I'm going to move on. Hearing, no objection? All right, next on the item, agenda, is item E2. And again, by consensus, E1 will be heard next on, on Monday, January 14. E2 is, again, the Town Administrator. This is an update on I T problems. We spent a fair amount of time on this at our last regular meeting. Back to you.
Thank you. I still need to provide a more detailed list of items that you wanted to see, what the money that you authorized, the estimated amount that was needed, what that will buy us. I've been working on that with the consultant who's doing the restoration of the I T systems at Police and Fire. My main concern was that I could verify that the work that is proceeding at a very quick pace right now, and is incurring expenses, is within that overall amount, and I've been able to do that as much, but not until this afternoon, getting the latest in terms of how much labor has been expended on this, which has been very significant because of the kind of investigations they had to do and the difficulty they had getting into the system that was controlled by a previous consultant, very labor-intensive. The good thing is that on the equipment side, we're well within the estimates, and the latest estimate in terms of how much work needs to be done shows that the work can be completed within the overall amount that has been, has been authorized, which was approximately $27,000.
Jan, just apart from the money, what's the status of the system?
The status is that in the Fire Department, things have been stabilized. Email in particular is operating reliably. For them, email is actually a very important function. And the Police Department work is still ongoing, but there, too, they expect to be able to switch over to a cloud-based network system sometime next week, and then everything will be operating on that platform rather than the older platform. And both email systems and other systems such as I M C and the Emergency Management Communication System, et cetera, should be stabilized. They expect that next week, there will be one or two days where there will be intermittent timeouts, so that the transfer and the switch can actually happen, but we're, we're very close now. I will say that during the holidays, we did have a little bit of a holdup because of the holidays, and also initially, we're bureaucrats after all. We didn't really get our act together enough to let the consultants go as quickly as they wanted to, so...
So again, this was, we spent a lot of time on this. This was testified by multiple people as a, as an unexpected emergency, and it sounds like we're a lot more comfortable at the moment.
Yes.
Is there any other support we can give you, or anything else you need at this time?
No, and I can actually, I meant to print them out, but I have a little spreadsheet showing where we are in terms of the expenses. But again, there are complications while we go. I had to figure out what happened with sales tax that we were being charged, and that we shouldn't be charged, so that has to be fixed before I give you the final numbers.
Okay. Everybody good? All right, we're moving right along here. E3, also, Mr. Town Administrator. This one is an approval of a purchase and sales agreement with Mr. Robert Lance Incorporated, I'm sorry, not Mr. Robert Lance, from Robert A. Lance, Inc. of Portsmouth, for Assessor's Platte 109-Block 113, lots 32, 33, 34, and 35, with a total purchase price of $270,000. And my understanding is we have an updated purchase and sales agreement?
Yes, and I'll take the blame for having the wrong version included in your packet. That turned out to be the very first offer that they made back in April. It looked similar. I don't know exactly how it happened, but you should have gotten the one that's dated on the last page, December 12, signed by Mr. Lance. That is the correct version, and it has the correct purchase price in it, and the updated provisions that were reviewed by the town solicitor. So this is the correct version, and I would recommend that you approve this particular purchase and sale agreement.
Mr. President, I was kind of surprised that this was on the public session, seeing that you're all new to this. These lots that were selling are prime property, and I'm not quite, and there was, there was a lot of discussion on whether or not these lots need to go to this purchaser, because we do have other people interested. These are prime lots, and may be able to go for a better price. We discussed this months and months, and I thought that maybe we should go into executive with this, so this could be discussed with the new council, and we can know other offers.
Mr. President? I have to admit, too, I feel that an executive session discussion is in order, not because there's anything particularly at issue with this applicant, but keep in mind that as part of our fiduciary responsibility here, we are attempting to sell and market other pieces of property, and any particular buyer or applicant may or may not have an effect on our sales and marketing strategy, which we're entitled to be confidential about when we do a purchase in the industrial park. We're not selling, I mean, it's a piece of standalone land, but we're also trying to sell all the land around it. And in fairness to the new members of the council, I do think that some of the questions that came up about various parts of the, of the park, and implications of selling to different kinds of businesses, and how they may or may not affect other parcels, is a worthwhile discussion for everybody to have, because I think that that's the best way for the whole council to make a really informed decision. So I do actually think, while obviously voting on anything like this needs to happen in public, we should have one executive session discussion on this, so everybody is up to speed and has the same information.
You're the sponsor, so would you like to see here?
I'm not a sponsor, at all.
Was it on the agenda?
No. It wasn't me who put it on the agenda. It has to be on the agenda, because the last time, this was before the council, it was scheduled to be on the agenda with a purchase and sale agreement. It's becoming increasingly difficult to do anything with the industrial park. And I will have to say that I am simply responding to the last meeting the council had on this matter, where the applicant or the proponent made a presentation, lots of questions were asked, and the reception and response was positive, and the direction was essentially for me to go forward, finalize the purchase and sale agreement. That was the decision made at that meeting, and I do not want to be perceived as somehow doing things that this council is not prepared to do. If so, then I would request that you have someone else negotiating these matters and getting the industrial park built.
I remember the discussion. I remember them coming and talking to us, but I don't remember any direction to sign, to go forward with it, and I really think, only fairness to the rest of this council, we should go over the map and they should see what, what's for sale and the other offers that we've had.
Yeah, we did discuss some, some other things in executive session about price and about other spots in the park, but we did give him authority to go forward at the time.
That's my recollection.
I don't do the call that, but that's, I don't remember vote. Was there a vote?
We told the ma-
We told the man to go forward.
Was there a vote?
No, we never took a vote in executive session, no.
We never took a vote here the other night either. It's fine. I just feel that this is prime property, and I feel we need to discuss it.
Yeah, I agree. And we did, we did tell the administrator to try to see if we could increase the price, which they did, and we told him to go forward.
It was the old council.
Okay, so I'm just wanting to vote here. I kind of felt this on the other item. I'm not inclined to micromanage the town administrator, but we obviously have a job to do here. So I, I'm not also certain that every single thing that can be discussed in executive session needs to be, but if this was picked up by our prior council, we're very reluctant to, you know, we should honor their request, and if they want to keep it there, we, you know. But I, I do think there's some concern that there's a lot of the stuff that happens in executive session, and we come out and here's the purchase price. We might benefit from public input as well, so I think there's a balance.
Well, only go into executive session because there's other people offering, right, and that, we don't.
And this is not yet binding, this is signed by them, and we have not countersigned. Is that, is that right?
Yes.
Did you want to jump in? Are we missing anything here?
No, to answer your question is correct. The council needs to ratify the agreement in order for it to be effective.
And Rob, for the record, I'm not micromanaging. I'm just, I'm just thinking of the new counselors that did not hear the other offers and do not know the plots that are available.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. Okay. All right. I don't think we can add executive session on spot, right, for something like this?
You cannot.
We can discuss and open, but, all right. I'm inclined to follow the request of Denise and Tricia on this. Is there any strong objection to pushing this, or do you think we'll lose the buyer?
No.
Okay. All right. Let's push it. Joe, what do you think?
Yeah.
You.
I'm in favor of pushing it off for another week or two.
All right.
Because there was some background work that I was looking into that I haven't gotten any more information on yet, but I'm hoping to get that.
All right. All right, we'll let it pass. We'll let it pass.
Hey, this is good news. We're getting interest in the industrial park. It's all good.
So do you want it on executive session next meeting?
I'm wondering, should we have a workshop on the executive part? Because there are all these moving parts that we haven't been appraised of.
Well, this gets to a larger concern, and I am hoping with the new year that we can kind of revisit this workflow. We, I don't think it's fair to you, I don't think it's fair to the staff, I don't think it's fair to us to be taking on executive session matters at 11, 12, 1:00 in the morning. And so we have to find a way to streamline, you know, the workflow on this. So I'm in the camp that would rather have more meetings instead of meetings that go six hours into the night, especially when they're really focused, like we just did Saturday. But I'm just one, you know, if those of you think it would be worth a power hour or two to really, you know, work on the industrial park, I'm all for it.
I think it would be worth it, because I'm sensing there's some kind of a juggling act going on, that each applicant, we're going to start weighing, well, if we do this one, are we going to lose that one? And I need to understand the bigger picture, which I guess I'm not understanding yet.
Okay. Who recommended the workshop? I'm sorry, was that?
Just.
That was me.
Okay.
My voice got deep.
Okay. I always try to schedule this, and then after about five minutes, somebody's upset. So why don't we not try to schedule that on the spot this time? And why don't we let it pass on the agenda? And we will do our best to move on this as quick as we can with a fresh new year. Okay. Thank you for your work, John. We appreciate it. And thank you for letting us take a shot at getting up to speed on this. Appreciate that.
But just, Mr. President, though, although in fairness to the applicant, I think we should take this up as soon as we.
Explain it.
Yeah, I mean, we should take it up as soon as we can. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to be unfair to the applicant. I mean, they've made an offer. So if we can't have a workshop before our next meeting, or if, I hate to say this, if we need to have a special meeting that, to just discuss the industrial park in this application and then be able to vote in public, we should do it sooner rather than later.
I agree. I think he was very responsive to whatever he felt was the direction he was getting from this town council.
At the risk of throwing out a bad idea, but the January 7th workshop, I've been to a few of them, and I've never seen them go, I've never seen them go three hours.
15 minutes usually.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could throw, is an hour, is an hour a good warm-up to this topic, or do you think we need more than?
I think we all need to sit down, and you need to.
Could we, we could append this as a workshop only when we meet with the school committee and the budget committee? Is that, is that a terrible idea on January 7th?
So we'd have to see if the library was available, and then we'll extend our meeting.
And then when we come back on the 14th, we don't have to take.
As long as it's in session, we'll have to clear out.
Right, so it would have to be, it'd have to be advertised as a town council meeting with an executive session.
Is that okay? Okay. Did anybody come here to speak on this, since it is on the open today? Okay. Did you want to be heard?
Sorry, you want me to post this as a special meeting part, executive session added on to the workshop?
I think so.
The joint workshop.
Well, we have to make sure, well, I'm sure the library is available if we're going to use it.
We'll find out.
Part of the night.
Did anybody come out to the meeting to be heard on this? I want to make sure they have a shot to speak.
Would you please state the motion then?
We have no motion. We're just administratively looking to schedule this matter on January 7th alongside the currently scheduled joint meeting workshop with the school committee and the budget committee presently set for the.
January 7th.
January 7th at 7:00?
7:00 p.m.
So this probably would go at 9:00? 8:00?
Oh, this would go like at 7:30. That's how quick these are going.
Yeah. No, no.
Just had one question with that. You're going to need the maps and stuff. We're going to be bringing that over to the school department.
Yes, we're going to need all those maps.
Did anybody want to be heard on this before we move on? Okay. We're just going to move this to the 7th. Okay? All right. Okay, thank you. We are now on to financial business. This is the issue of renewing the employment contract. I'd like to suggest that this also pass, because I would like to review this, either with Labor Council or with a new solicitor if we have one in place. Is there any objection to passing this?
No.
Mr. President, I thought this had already been delayed.
It already has been.
It's already been pushed off the agenda once so that people had time to come up to speed on it.
It has. I just, we didn't specify when it was going to be delayed until. So I'd like to suggest we, particularly in light of some of the concerns we had with the form of the planner contract, I want to get this one right so that we don't have to spend a lot of time on these.
Mr. President.
Sir?
I have to object. This person shouldn't have to wait any longer. If there's a problem with the contract, then let's say what it is and deal with it. But this person should not have to wait for his contract to be renewed. He's an excellent employee, has been outstanding, doing outstanding work, works very hard. This has been on the agenda for a while. This really should not be delayed.
I have to agree, so I'm going to make a motion to ratify the three-year renewal employment contract for David Robert, Tessa Sessa, from December 11, 2018 to December 10, 2021, to increase the salary from $73,618 to $75,090.36.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to ratify as presented. I think the second was from Joe. Okay. Again, well, I should allow, does anybody else want to speak on this before I share my comments again?
I would.
I think the contract needs to be fixed, and I don't know what the hurry is. He's still going to get the money.
How do you feel it needs to be fixed?
Rob already said what needed to be fixed. It wasn't worded correctly, so it just needs to be fixed. It's not worded correctly. He wants it written different. So he wants to have legal counsel and the solicitor and to look at it, and that's all. It's just not correct.
Rob, would you like to explain why you think it's not correct?
I would, although I'd rather not labor it tonight. But I do think there's a provision in there which provides a 120-day cushion. So the employee still has a four-month cushion, as I recall, so this is certainly no harm to Mr. Roberts. Certainly doesn't say anything negative, but we did have some issues with the form of the last contract that we looked at, and I just want to get it right. And I don't, I really don't see what the problem is here. So I would suggest that the motion be withdrawn or voted down, and then we take a motion to continue.
Could we continue the motion with that exception for that particular line?
Well, I'm trying to find that particular line. It's the 120 days.
Yeah, and to be clear, I have absolutely no problem with the reappointment of Mr. Roberts, and I don't have a problem with the salary number here, but I do have a problem with the form of the contract. And I think it would be appropriate if we had that reviewed closely by Labor Council.
I believe he has.
You don't have a second on the motion, I assume?
Yes, I do.
We do. Mr. Perry had the second. So we do have a live motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
While I don't disagree that we run into issues in the past with the 120-day notification kind of thing, and that, you know, it's not a bad idea to review contracts periodically, but I think in fairness to existing employees, particularly when you have a good employee who's been here for a very long time and does a fine job such as Mr. Roberts, it's not particularly fair to say, okay, starting with you, you know, we're going to change the contract. And I think the work may need to be done, but I think it should be done separately from any one individual's contract, and that the employee should have time and be aware that we're revisiting the contracts. There may be things that are up for discussion, as opposed to deciding sort of arbitrarily with the one employee who happens to be, you know, in front of us now, that we're going to make changes, particularly because technically, Mr. Roberts' employment contract is expired. I don't think that that's the best way to treat valuable employees. I think if we want to do the contract work separately from any individual employee, that that's a worthwhile exercise. But I do think that we should go forward with Mr. Roberts' contract tonight. At some point, I mean, we've already got employees who have this contract that have been recently ratified, so it's not going to change for them either. It just is something that should be done independently from any particular employee, and I think that we should go ahead and ratify Mr. Roberts' contract tonight.
Mr. President?
Sir?
Is it just the extension of the contract that you have question on?
Again, I don't know how much you want to get into this level of detail. The contract already has a 120-day extension. So even though it is terminated, it's really not terminated. It is in force and full legal force and effect for 420 days. So this doesn't leave David without a contract. It doesn't cast any negative light upon him. All I want to do, and, you know, we've had some issues where matters have come before this council. I mean, the very first thing that we did in this council is address a solar ordinance that we did not adopt and now needs correction, okay? And I think the planner and the town administrator nicely extended a probationary period to give us time to look at this, so we're not picking on any one individual. And I just told you that I have no problem with the reappointment, but we have to get it right. It has to start somewhere. I mean, what if, what if our, our labor union said that? Oh, you know, you can't change anything because, so all I'm asking for is to have this thing looked at, and let's get it right so that we don't have to go over it again and again. And I don't think that's unreasonable, and it certainly isn't meant to target any employee.
Mr. President, I would like to request some more direction here. I'm actually a little, not a little, I'm surprised that it has to come to a council meeting to get this raised the way it's being raised right now. The contract has been on the table for a little while. If there are particular concerns with the contract, I would have loved to have the opportunity to fix those with the solicitor or whatever advice from Labor Council you might want to be involved. But can you tell me how we avoid a repeat of this, and what I can do to avoid that from happening again?
What I think, what I think we need clarity on, a lot of these, as you said, have been on the agenda for a while, and I think this just came up with the industrial park, which had also been on the agenda for a while with the previous council. So this council has been installed for 31 days, and this is its fifth meeting in 31 days. So most of what you see on this agenda is really not been put on by this council that hasn't come from before. The only new item that you've seen really, I think, is the playground. I could be missing one or two things.
No, the playground was on there before.
So, great. So my point. So I am happy to work more closely on scrubbing the agenda on this. I mean, I'm very reluctant to keep things off of the agenda that are requested by a sponsor, which is where I, what I thought you were on the industrial park, and I didn't mean to suggest otherwise. Little holiday mood lighting. So what I, what I can do is I can commit to you, and I don't know if there's others that have thoughts on this as well, but I will make sure that all of my comments are in writing to you and, in fact, the whole council and the public, if you'd like, well in advance of the 14th.
There's a motion on the floor, though.
Okay. Are you pressing the motion?
Well, I just wanted to clarify what, I mean, at the meeting, this was on prior agenda, and we held it off. This meeting in particular was essentially a special meeting. I think it's just come up before people have had a chance to review in a level of detail you're asking for. And as Rob said, there's, I think we're talking mainly editing here, not so much provisions of the contract. And so I think if it remains in force for the 120 days and nobody's expressing any doubts about Mr. Roberts' performance or desire to keep him on, I think it's just a matter of holding off a little bit to look at the contract and give us all some time to catch up. I mean, as you said, we've been meeting, meeting on average every six days or so. It just takes a little time to get your feet under you.
You know, from a management point of view, it's hard to get good staff to apply here. And I think that, I think that when, you know, someone's contract has been pushed back, it was on the agenda, and it was pushed back because some members of the council weren't ready to work with it, and now it's being pushed back again, and the employee is finding out in public that the council may not like some of the language in the contract and wants to redo it. It sends a message about how we treat people. So you have to ask yourself, the next time that we're advertising for a department head or a position and we're bemoaning the fact that we're not getting a lot of applicants, you know, remember, part of our responsibility is also, you know, to help attract and retain good, qualified, competent people. And I don't think that treating a good employee in this way helps our reputation to do that. Again, if you want to do the contract thing, that's one thing, but it should be done separately and independently and not done at the 11th hour, you know, with one employee getting sort of caught in the trap because people didn't have time between the two weeks or however long ago it was that this was first on the agenda, and nobody's, you know, raised their, their issues with it.
My only response to that is actually, I agree, and I think what the best practice that we should be, that we should be striving for, and I'm sure many of you do in your businesses, is these should be looked at about six months in advance, not one council meeting while the council's, while the contracts are expired. Okay?
Could we vote on my motion, please?
We have a live motion and a second. Is there any objection to proceeding to a vote? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed?
Come on. Change, change, change.
And I, okay.
Is this about you?
Could you restate the motion?
Excuse me?
Sure. So I think it was Denise's motion, but it was essentially to approve as presented.
Would you like me to say it?
Welcome for voting for the town. Are you taking public comment on this? Because this is like, this is our.
Yeah, I'd be happy to take public comment, sure. Well, I mean, we, I'm about.
But this says, but this is.
That's fine, just, I don't need to know where you live, just tell us.
This in the piece, though, talks about raising his salary and approving his contract. And then there's discussion that you don't want to talk about. It's a little bit secretive. It's certainly not eliciting my trust in this council. This man is working for us. This says his money is supposed to talk about his contract. This is making me upset. I'm Patty Souza-Cooper, 18 Beach. You're saying that you object to portions of his contract, but you're not willing to even say what that is. This has nothing to do with that. And I wholeheartedly agree with Patricia, I mean, honestly.
Additional public comment, please?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Anybody wish to be, speak.
When I was in the corporate world.
It's the microphone thing. And again, we don't, we don't need to know where you live, just let us know your connection to town, and please, if you're a resident or something. Thank you.
My name's Dan Darren, Delta Echo Romeo Echo November. I'm a citizen, taxpayer, and elector. In the corporate world, in some of the shenanigans that I used to see in the corporate world, in one particular organization, they call, they had a task that they called a rock fetch. And a rock fetch was a situation where, well, we couldn't tell you exactly what we want, but we want you to go fetch a rock. And so you'd go out and you'd fetch a rock, and you'd come back, and the decision maker would say, not that one. So think about that a little bit. What are the characteristics of this rock that you're asking someone to fetch? Because you haven't exactly discussed what it is you want, what it is you don't want. There's this amorphous, gee, I don't know, I kind of don't like this, I kind of don't like that. And it brings to mind an old expression that I'll paraphrase, that one should defecate or get off the pot, if you will. Thank you.
So, again, I don't know if I was clear about this, but this matter is going to be heard on January 14th, and the council has already approved support for the employee. We want it reviewed by Labor Council. That's it. That's it. Okay? Any other comments?
I wanted to clarify what's, in an earlier meeting with very full agendas, we asked to hold this off so we could have time to look at it. It's appeared, just, nobody requested it to come back on, and nobody checked with any of the council members whether to put it back on, whether we were prepared. So it's not as if we've asked for something and then said.
I'm sorry, it's hard to hear you.
It's not as if we've asked for something that we didn't specify. We just said we needed time on this, and it has appeared on the agenda without anybody asking us if that time has passed.
All right. So the president of the town council approves all the agendas, is that correct? It used to be when I was president, Nancy. Did you run this by Rob?
No.
I send the agenda to the council president and to the town administrator.
Yeah, I have.
It's on me because I'm under the assumption it was continued. That's the process.
I'm not going to block anything on the agenda until this council adopts council rules. If I blocked it from the agenda, then there'd be other issues. So I don't know what else I can say about this, other than I don't think it's, every other contract that has come up here has come up here time and time and time again, you know, even to a level that I think is maybe almost too in the weeds and should just be deferred to the town administrator. This will come up on the 14th. You can hold me to it, and I think that's all there is to say about it. And I'd like to see a formal motion to continue so that we're sure that that is going to be the disposition.
I move to continue it to the 14th.
Is there any objection to proceeding to a vote on the motion to continue? Okay, second call? Any further comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. The motion is a live motion to continue this matter as presented to Monday, January 14th. All those in favor? And those opposed? Four, three. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Jan, discussion of the process for the fiscal year 20 budget.
I'm going to ask that we forego this discussion.
Okay. Sure. Okay. Any objection to that? Did anybody come out to be heard just on this topic? Okay. All right, hearing none. It'll pass by consensus.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Just on that topic, he's foregoing the overall discussion on this, but I think the council should know that I'm going to plug in numbers for the council as they are this year, and if you're going to change them, you should let us know, because it has to be presented to the Budget Committee by the 15th.
Yeah, I was just thinking about how can we forego this if we're going to, we don't have a lot of meetings.
I think some direction, I want the council wants on at least their portion of the budget. Normally, they'll say, keep the contingency here or change it to this or that. How am I going to know that? How is Jan going to?
I think we need a budget workshop. I hate to say it, but I really do. Before the 15th.
We did not pass on discussion of this. This matter is being discussed right now. And the question now is, do you want to have a budget workshop?
Well, doesn't this have to go to the Budget Committee in January? Sometime in January, right?
Can I make a suggestion? You are going to have a budget workshop on the 7th. The charter lays out what the basic deadlines are. I am to submit a preliminary budget no later than January 15th, according to the charter. That's my plan. And next week, ahead of that particular deadline, I thought, but then again, it almost feels like I'm ever newer to this town. I can't get used to it. That we should have a discussion as to what exactly is expected, because I haven't been through the budget process here before. I need to get some guidance. I have some ideas as to what I think I would like to achieve in preparing and submitting a budget, and I would like to discuss that with you. Right now, I do not feel able to do that.
Jan, specifically on the 7th, usually what we do is just talk about what our, what we, what we, what our goals are, and what we think our budget looks like. We don't even know what it looks like. Like, we haven't seen a budget. So we usually just tell them, like, our increase this year, maybe this, we have this added expense, insurance is gone, like, just real, like, basic, not anything you can hold us to, but just kind of an idea on where we're going with it.
It's the first time that anyone has said something like that to me.
All right, that's, I'm sorry, I said it. But that's, but that's the way it's been normally. We just go there and kind of give them some kind of idea on where our budget is going.
I will say this, that I think it's important, from my perspective at least, to use the information that I've been able to gather so far to put some of the bigger issues on the table. Among them are that we have some very serious capital needs outstanding that haven't been addressed in a long time. And that there are different ways of doing that, and that the council may want to consider, the Budget Committee may want to consider to split up the budget in an operating budget and a capital budget. And when it comes to a capital budget in particular, to make it a habit to look at a five-year capital plan, a rolling five-year capital plan, so that you don't make decisions on a year-by-year basis, but you have some idea of what's waiting for us. With that comes a discussion of whether the capital budget accounts should be different in nature, such that when you appropriate or allocate certain monies to capital accounts, the money actually stays in those accounts, subject to approval of a rollover on every year, rather than just assuming that you have one year to spend it. Because the nature of capital planning is such that it makes more sense to do it that way, at least in my opinion. That's only an opinion that I think needs to be a discussion. I'd like to see a substantive discussion of these kinds of issues before we get into the more detailed discussions of, you know, what the budget requests are of the various officers, as well as department heads and myself.
Jan, just to, I mean, to be frank about it, having gone to a number of these joint workshops, they tend to have the feel of a meeting everybody knows we're supposed to have by statute or by the charter, but don't really matter. That's not how it should be, but it's the feel. So if you're feeling any pressure based on that meeting, past history doesn't suggest that. Now, regarding a lot of things you've just mentioned, all, many of which are good ideas, I think a lot of that would have to be charter changes, such as rolling things over from year to year.
No, I don't believe so, but that's why I think there needs to be a discussion.
I like the workshop idea.
Yeah, I do, too. You want to do a Saturday? That's what we've normally done in the past. We usually like spans like eight to 12 on the workshop.
That's what I recall.
Well, you don't have a lot of time behind 14th. You have two Saturdays left, the 6th and the 13th.
Yeah. No, the 5th and the 12th.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's Sunday.
The 5th and the 12th.
I can't do Sunday.
I don't want to do Sunday.
I'm sorry, the 5th and the 12th.
So, well, let me help, see if I can narrow this. Are you comfortable if the workshop with us occurred after the joint workshop with the school committee and the budget committee? Or would you really like to walk into that, like, you know?
I don't think there's, if it were on the 12th, and the deadline for submission of the budget is the 15th, that's not enough time necessarily to incorporate, you know, what I might, picture in the workshop.
I don't think we have time to advertise for the 5th. Oh, yes, we do. I'm really sorry.
Okay. Is there any objection to Saturday, January 14th?
Nope.
You're talking like in.
Yeah, just like we did last Saturday. I mean, we're being open, of course, but, you know, bring coffee.
Sure, I'm open. What time?
What time?
What's your pleasure? Do you need any support staff, Jan, or?
To do what?
I think we did 8:30 last Saturday. Is that, you want to shoot for 8:30? Okay.
As long as you bring coffee muffins, no problem.
Okay. I think that's a consensus.
And the items just going to be overall discussion of the fiscal year 20.
Yeah, I don't, I guess you can post it as a vote meeting if you want, but I think, again, I'm just one person here. I mean, I'm comfortable with the administrator putting his initial request in without, I mean, but whatever you'd like to see, we're here for you. Do you want to see votes that day?
Just in case you're wondering, I do not have a budget ready at this point. I'm still working on it. It's an awful lot of, you know, give and take with the department heads and figuring out how to make things work. And also, the kinds of things that I just mentioned are a somewhat new approach to things, and I want to make sure that when I put it on the table, it has been vetted and thought through, so that there is some solidity there. So I'm not ready to put, you know, all the numbers in front of you. Hopefully, that will be different come the 5th. I mean, that's my goal, but.
Will the 5th be helpful to you, though, just to get some direction from us, or just some discussion?
Direction would be great.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds like a, sounds like a plan. All right. So that's the 5th, the 7th, the 14th, and the 28th, so far, in January. Okay? All right, let's move on.
So 5.
All right. So we are, our next item is new business at 8:05. Too bad. And what we have first is from Councilor Driggs, consideration of impossible vote on engagement of a new town solicitor. And what I'd like to suggest, because we did have, we had some open forum folks, I'd like, Nancy's the sponsor, I'd like her to have the first crack at this, and then, once we open it up to the floor, I think maybe we'll, like, these eight people can have priority if they, if they want to have priority.
Mr. President, as the sponsor, I would like to move at this point for appointment of Giovanni Cisioni as the new town solicitor through 6:30, 2019. Knowing, knowing that if there's a second to the motion, there will be discussion.
Mr. President? Is there a second?
I'll second. First of all, I am, first of all, who's the discussion? I do not have a resume in front of me. I have not checked references. I only know about this man because I looked on the internet. He was recommended by Mr. Katz, who, they are associated, working together, I understand. And I'd like to ask that question to Mr. Gennavani, if he could. I also think there's some kind of an ethical problem here, although Counselor Katz doesn't agree with me, but I would really like to go to the Ethics Commission and get an opinion on whether these three counselors that have a lawsuit against the town should be voting on this.
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Here's what I'm going to try to do, and I know, I know, there's strong feelings on this. I'd like to attempt to follow protocol, and what I'd like to do is I'd like to allow the sponsor to have introductory comments, not all night long, and then the second, and then counselors that wish to speak in opposition. And Denise has beat me to the punch. And once the council has had, if anyone's had an opportunity to comment once, we're going to open it up to the floor, and we can go, you know, as long as we, as long as you'd like to at a reasonable time. And I suspect we will ask the candidate to speak at some point, so, you know, please treat him with respect. So I'm going to go to Nancy, Donna.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yes.
May I speak? May I say something? I, what I'd like to ask, Mr. President, because the agenda item that counselors, Denise and Perry and I put in, time-wise, came in second. So it's listed second on the agenda, but if we go forward with G1, then it makes G2 completely moot. So I would request, actually, that we address G2 first.
I think there's an open motion, isn't there?
What's the second?
Well, what, yeah, we have a live motion, but I'm happy to discuss them both at the same time, but I don't know that there's a, I don't know that we need to take them out of order. And I actually don't know which of the two that the eight speakers wish to be heard on, so that'll be open as well. Okay, so here's the plan. I know there's some hot feelings on this. We're going to get Nancy speak, then Donna, then opposition. Any further counsel comments, and if it's all, anybody that wants to speak, you know, just try to keep it somewhat cordial, and we'll see where it goes.
But, Mr. Colter, if you do it, I'm sorry, but if you do it that way, then G2 becomes completely moot. You're going to take, you're going to have discussion and a vote on G1, which completely moots G2.
Point of order, this has been raised and addressed. The floor is to Nancy Driggs to initiate the conversation. There's a motion on the floor.
But it hasn't been addressed.
It has been addressed. This is, we'll have the conversation at the same time. We have to have the conversation in a specific order. The person made a motion, speaks first.
But, but.
But Counselor Hilton is placing a motion to bring G.
Question two first.
G2 up before G1.
There's a live motion on the floor.
There's a main motion on the floor.
Well, there's a motion and a discussion.
There's a motion, there's a second. And as the sponsor, I would like to.
Let me just promise this, okay? I promise that we will speak to both G1 and G2 before there is any voting, and then we will, we will play motion practice, you know, whatever we have to do to make sure that everybody who wants to be heard is heard. And I have some hope that by the time we've had a good discussion about this, that we might actually all be in a, in a better place today. I'm always the optimist.
I don't see how. Can I ask the floor to be?
Yes, I don't see how bad it is.
Okay. So, please keep it somewhat brief.
Yes, I will keep it brief. My, I will keep it brief.
I will stay here all night.
As we all know, Attorney DeSisto offered his resignation, which was accepted by the town council over a month ago. And I have interviewed this candidate for the town council and feel.
I object. I object. That individual town councilor should not be interviewing lawyers without the permission of all seven.
I have.
Talk about a backroom deal.
I am the sponsor of this person.
You should not be interviewing according to open meetings laws.
I did not interview, like, you're not the spot...
But you are not the sponsor of this. What are you talking about?
That's not our role, sponsor of this motion.
All of us are free to talk to people who we want to.
I object, and I think that's an open meetings violation. Take note of that, audience.
So this is going to go one of two ways, okay? We will stay here all night, okay? All right. But if we can't let people speak for one or two minutes, all right, I promise you, everybody that wants to speak will speak. We don't need to object over each other. For those of you that think you've got a complaint, you're free to file it. I understand that. We're not stopping you. Just let them move and make her motion.
I have spoken with this candidate, of whom I am the sponsor, and I feel he is competent for the following reasons that Tiverton should consider. He is a partner in a very large Providence firm, which gives us a Town Solicitor and an immediate array of assistant Town Solicitors should we need a specific area of expertise. Can I please speak? May I please speak? Thank you. His firm has been counsel for three Rhode Island towns, including North Kingstown, Smithfield, and Bristol. In his practices of law, in addition to his corporate work, and he is here for all of you to talk to about this, he has had extensive exposure to land use and planning issues, which I think are very relevant and pertinent to Tiverton at this time, and also to incentive negotiations for businesses. In his first three years of practice, he's a graduate of Boston University Law School, he was in-house Legislative Counsel for the EDC and involved with zoning and land use laws and tax and business incentive laws. Over the next five years, he was intimately involved with the federal transfer of the Quonset industrial park land, a 20-year process involving much planning and land use planning. He has, in addition, led early state efforts on use of brownfields, redevelopment of old industrial sites, and historic revitalization, also issues that are currently important to Tiverton. He has also been for 12 years on the Board of Nature Conservancy and a past member of the Cranston Community Development Block Grant Commission. He speaks frequently in public policy and economic development issues, including tax and regulatory policy and environmental aspects of redevelopment and real estate transaction. I think he is more than qualified to serve as this Town Council until June 30. I think the issues that this Town Council feels are very important right now is the role of the Town Council, of the Town Solicitor, in light of the financial town referendum budget process in May 2019. I think we need to look at what the budget and a possible more creative use of a Town Solicitor, and also to specifically clarify the role of the Town Solicitor in the representation of the Town Council and all Tiverton Boards and Commissions. So that is my reason for putting him forward at this point.
Donna, did you, Donna, would you want, were you the second?
Yes.
Okay. Donna, do you have anything further to add before we kick it off here?
I think he's well-qualified and would very much be an asset to the town for the time that he would be helping us with these, these areas that are concerning, and that's why I seconded it.
Okay. So I'm about to turn it over to any of the councilors that wish to speak with priority to those that wish to speak in opposition, because we do have a motion, although I do want to remind everybody that the candidate is here. And so if, if it would make sense, and if we can treat this person with respect, he is, I would be willing to, I imagine, speak. And I don't know if you would prefer that, or you'd prefer to have discussion first than us. What's your pleasure?
I would, I would like to speak. I, yeah, this is the first I've heard of his qualifications on the open. Like I said, we had no backup to this at all, so the rest of us didn't get to, oh, look at these qualifications. But if he is so qualified, then I invite him to apply when we put out an RFP the way we have in the past. I truly think that the process the way it is is not a problem. Tony DeSisto has offered to stay. He is familiar with the lawsuits. He is familiar with the budget. And we could, like I said, we could have a lawyer in two to three months if we concentrate and do it. But this is no insult to the candidate in front of us. I just feel that other lawyers in Rhode Island should have the opportunity to apply. And I feel that we should have the opportunity to look at resumes, call these recommendations, and see what we have out there. And I don't know why there is such a rush, because we have a firm that will stay with us, and I do believe, and I've been through this process before, I do believe that we will have somebody before the referendum. I believe we'd have somebody by March. But I don't know why we're rushing. This is no insult to the candidate at all. If what Nancy is saying is true, and I don't doubt it is, then he can come and apply and can be considered and may be our next solicitor. But I think that we have, should have the opportunity to interview other lawyers, just like we have in the past.
Mr. President, I feel we were all elected here to represent the taxpayers of Tiverton and do what was in the best interest of them. And if we have a policy in place to do an RFP, then I think that's what we should follow, is the RFP and have them apply the proper way, the way everybody has in the past. That's the way I feel.
Mr. President, it's my understanding that we were advised by Peter Squares last time that the RFP does not apply to a process that the Town Council has to use for selection of a solicitor.
Right. And what I'm hoping, I know we're not all going to leave happy, but I want to try to stress where I think there might be room for agreement. And I think we all agree that a formal RFP process is not a requirement, and I think that it's not always done that way in other towns. But I really want to stress one thing, the suggestion here by the sponsor is that this is an interim process only. So this is just to the conclusion of this fiscal year, which is just six months. So at least for my, I'm just trying to identify areas where at least there might be room for agreement. So I don't want anybody to think that this is this permanent thing. I just want to point, point out the interim nature, but I don't want to steal your...
All right. I'm going to say it right out loud here, that there appears to be a hidden agenda here, and I'm not sure what it is, because we have to have this interim after the, till after the budget, till after the referendum. Keep in mind, we have lawsuits because some people wanted to put stuff on the referendum, and Tony went to court, and it was not put on the referendum. So I'm really getting worried about this, that we're going to have a lawyer that obviously is friends with Mr. Katz, Nancy has interviewed, that, you know, I hate to say it, but may just go along with the four, and I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right for Tiverton.
Mr. President, I'd like to respond with one thing initially. This came up several meetings ago at my suggestion, and the, so there's no hidden agenda. The idea is, this will allow us to step back, take a longer-term approach to the RFP process, think about how the solicitors' role ought to be handled, and be able to go forward with something, it would be new fiscal year.
The bottom line is, Tony will stay. Tony will stay.
And we have also discussed discomfort of some of the council members with that arrangement.
Because he doesn't agree with you all the time, and that's the problem. Come on, Justin.
I'm not going to get into sparring match with you. There's disagreement about that process. We wanted to open up the ability for a longer-term RFP process, and we needed somebody to fill the gap. That's all we're doing right now. And I've already stated, that is not an acceptable, that is not an acceptable outcome for probably majority of, well, the majority of the Town Councils.
So, again, and then I'm going to defer to Counsel Hilton. The solicitor has resigned, and he resigned about a month ago. To his credit, him and Mr. Squares have been attending meetings and giving support, but it has been a month, and so there is, you know, this, you know, there is some question, right, of how long does a resignation go? So I just want to make sure, I'm just trying to find areas where there's at least clarity of fact and agreement that there has been a resignation and there's been a month, and then there's been this suggestion of the interim process.
Tony, how long will you stay?
He would stay until we found somebody.
You, you did say you'd stay until we found some.
Right.
Yeah, I, I did say that, but, you know, I have resigned, so I think that the process has to move along. I'm not, I did not resign and would want, continue on and on.
Right, the RFP process and hire a lawyer.
Well, whatever the process is, it's got to go as quickly as possible.
And I'd like to take the comment, because I know Tony, and I like Tony, and just like any time you put multiple lawyers in the room, there's going to be disagreements. And so I don't know that it's proper for us to spend a lot of time, you know, getting in, this is sort of like the other contract here. I mean, he's going to class act to sit here and come to this meeting and support the town through the transition, and I just think we need to keep that in mind, okay? I'm going to give it back to Tricia.
So I have several things to say. First of all, in response to Counselor Driggs, you may speak for you on the council, but I don't, you may speak for you on the council, but I don't think that you should represent the opinions of all the councils. So when you were saying, this council feels, or it's the opinion of this council, that's your opinion. With all due respect, you don't speak for me, and you don't speak for the other councilors. And frankly, I don't agree with the way that you feel. So please refrain from doing that going forward. Secondly, as far as this RFP process goes, from the very first meeting, it was known to us that Tony had asked not to be reappointed. He didn't resign, he asked not to be reappointed. And we could have begun the RFP process then. Had we begun the RFP process then, we'd already have the advertisements out, and in the month of January, we'd be interviewing candidates. So that isn't anybody else's fault, other than the fact that some members of the council didn't want to go through the RFP process, and here we are, December 27th, discussing how we are going about getting a replacement solicitor. As far as the candidate goes, again, I have no resume. I have some comments from Mrs. Driggs that I'm not able to verify for myself. To the best of my knowledge, Mr. Chichoni, if I hope I'm saying his name properly, has never served as a municipal solicitor anywhere. I don't know if other people in his firm have, but we're not hiring his firm, we're hiring Mr. Chichoni. And I don't know their, I don't know the terms, I don't know whether or not they were successful in their municipal service or not. I don't actually know if they actually have true municipal service. I don't know, to the best of my knowledge, that Mr. Chichoni has ever served as a land use attorney for a municipality. I don't know any of these things. So even if I didn't...
Tricia, excuse me. He's here, for heaven's sakes.
I, I understand that, but once Mrs. Driggs is going to make comments about his qualifications, then I have an opportunity to say what I do or do not know. So, you know, as far as that, even if I felt separately from the entire, what I think are potential ethical issues around all of this, the idea that I would vote to hire somebody without having any due diligence, without having any opportunity to check references, to look into somebody's background, I mean, I just think that that's a complete abrogation of our responsibility to the, to the voters. I just don't think that that's how you do this. Hang on, hold on, hold on. So, you know, that's one issue in particular. The second thing is that if you want to review what the solicitor does, the RFP is very, very broad. The RFP doesn't specify the contract, it doesn't specify the work. The RFP is extremely broad, so there's no harm in having an RFP. It doesn't lock you into exactly how the solicitor would operate or wouldn't operate, or things that you might like to change about that. So that argument doesn't really, in my opinion, prevent you from going forward with an RFP, which I think is the best way to get, you know, an opportunity to look at as many qualified candidates. And again, Mr. Chichoni may well be, at the end of the day, the most qualified candidate, and he would be welcome to apply. The third thing that I would like to bring up, then finally, is, you know, item G2 on the agenda, which has to do with whether or not this entire council should or should not be participating in this exercise. There are three councilors here who are currently plaintiffs in one or more lawsuits against the town. I don't understand, and I'm not the Ethics Commission, so it's not my decision to make, that that's necessarily acceptable, to participate in the hiring of a person who will potentially be defending the town against your lawsuits. And I really, truly do believe that you should be seeking opinions from the Rhode Island Ethics Commission. They are the body in this state that is charged with that. And I would point out to you, it doesn't matter what any one of us really think, ultimately it's their decision. But under Article III of the Constitution of Rhode Island, Article III of Qualification for Office, Section 7, Ethical Conduct, "The people of the State of Rhode Island believe that public officials and employees must adhere to the highest standards of ethical conduct, respect the public trust and the rights of all persons, be open, accountable, and responsive, avoid the appearance of impropriety, and not use their position for private gain or advantage. Such persons shall hold their positions during good behavior." The Constitution says it's not enough just to not do things that are improper, that we all, as elected officials, have to avoid the appearance of impropriety. And the only way to do that is to seek a formal opinion from the Rhode Island Ethics Commission. And frankly, I'm a little surprised that Counselor Coulter, who having been a solicitor before and having, having applied for a number of ethics opinions, including one that involved having been a litigant in a, in the past, in a lawsuit that he was no longer part of, went to the Ethics Commission for an opinion on just such a thing. I think that that is the best way forward. There are still four councilors who can continue with the RFP process. If you were to get an opinion from the Ethics Commission that says that you can participate, then you could fully and wholly participate in the process. But until that's done, I am really concerned that we are taking the town into a maelstrom that is eminently avoidable.
Excuse me, Mr. President, may I just add one thing? Yes. No, go ahead, go ahead.
I just like to respond since I was raised.
Okay. I just would like to point out, it's easy to pick and choose what you want to talk about, but Chapter 3614 of the Rhode Island General Laws, which has to do with conflict of interest and ethics, specifically says it only involves where the person can, is expected to directly result in an economic benefit. There is not, excuse me, excuse me. In any of the cases, which, as you know, we cannot discuss, there was no financial gain to be had by any person, and it was only public policy issues that would have benefited all Tiverton voters, and I yield to Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to try again to see if we can narrow the differences on this, okay? And I, and in the 10 years that I've been following Tiverton items closely too, I've also been suspicious from the outside on some of these things. What I'd like you to all know, as you know, the Town Council rarely, if ever, talks about litigation in open session, and that is the custom and practice, okay? And as I said, for those of you that were here last time or that were watching the tape, that we're not going to walk in, you know, we're not going to run into an ethics issue by discussing cases that are, while we're wearing this hat, okay? So we can't go into this nitty-gritty about what this case is about and what it isn't about, and I don't think it's fair to Tony either. But what I... But what I can tell you is this, these cases have no financial interest, they are public rights, civil rights cases, they are public documents that you can look them up, okay? And so, I do not think that there's any kind of an ethical issue here. And I actually discussed this with the assistant solicitor. I'm quite sure some of you, no matter what I say, have, will file complaints all over the state, and I know you, you know. But what I want, what I want you to know is that those cases have been filed to be dropped, okay, by those of us here. And I don't know that it was required, but I want to try to make people as comfortable as possible. And so, we're trying to just remove, as you said, the concern of the appearance, I'm trying to make people as comfortable as possible on this. And I appreciate the recognition that I have gone to the Ethics Commission a number of times, and I, you know, I think I have some information. And I have also discussed this with the assistant solicitor at the last, at the last meeting. The other thing, and I want it to be clarified by Mr. Katz and the candidate, but my understanding is that both Mr. Katz and the candidate, if approved, will also be seeking ethics advisory opinions on any follow-up issues that may or may not arise. And so, I'm happy to go on to any level of detail that you want, these are public documents, I'm happy to share them. I'll do everything that I can to try to assure you that there's not going to be an issue. For those of you that follow this closely, you may remember that it was just the last council where there was actually, I think she was the council president at the time, had active litigation against the town herself with another counselor.
Me? No, some way back.
Were you?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Yeah, and she joined, you know, those two councils, including the council president, joined with members that are seated in the school committee. They brought litigation, I assume they recused, I don't remember any of you complaining about it at the time, but, wonderful.
They recused themselves.
From discussion of that issue. From discussion of that issue. And as I said last time, we will be squeaky clean, Boy Scout compliant with all of that.
Mr. President, Mr. President, point of order. We have, I think you just indicated we have dismissed them.
I'm trying to, I'm just trying to narrow the issue.
Point of order. Just a point of order. The case that you are speaking about, which involved then-council president Shabbat, as well as Counselor Randy LeBeau, they were not, they did not hire, or they did not participate in hiring of any of the solicitors, and they were actually represented not by the municipal solicitor in their court case, but they were represented by the school committee solicitor, if I'm correct, who they have no control over his hiring, firing, salary, or performance review. So, it was an entirely different situation.
Well, no, we're not bringing in the town solicitor to represent our cases. So, that, I mean, that's very, we didn't claim that Joan and Randy-
Who's we?
Yeah, who's we?
Who's we? The four of you?
The council members who have, who had litigation against the town.
Who has litigation against the town? I'm not quite sure.
Ms. Hilton, Ms. Hilton just suggested that this, their situation was different because Joan Trabbitt and Randy LeBeau did not, had outside attorneys representing their case, and that's not a relevant distinction, because we're not, nobody's suggesting having the solicitor represent any lawsuits against the town.
Right.
But the situation is very similar, because at the time, Mr. DeSisto represented the town in defense of their lawsuit. And nobody, and let me finish, please, and nobody's complained that they had hire and fire authority over him, it's an at-will contract.
Oh, God. Okay, this is almost, we were not, at no time was there any consideration or discussion of replacing the town solicitor. Had there been any, had there been any, then potentially they might have been recused, but there wasn't. So, it's not the same thing, it's, this is, you know, that's an apples and oranges comparison. I'm just raising that point, that it's not the same situation, it was an apples and oranges comparison. I would like to understand, though, what Mr. Coulter said. Are you saying that the pending lawsuits are being withdrawn? I didn't understand what-
Yeah, I just told you that.
Okay.
We've dropped out of the cases, so we'll give you, we'll give you the paperwork.
I don't understand. I don't understand.
What don't you understand?
They're not suing the town anymore, that's what he's saying.
You filed, but I officially dropped.
All right, guys, we're not going to be going into great detail on this, okay? I'm telling you, I'm telling you, and I want, because I know, you know, we cannot go into great detail about the cases. What I'm telling you is you can go inspect the public record, and you can see, and maybe you can reserve your judgment on this until you inspect the public record, that if your big concern is that there's active, you know, cases, we've resolved that issue. So, hopefully, it's not an issue, okay?
If it's in the public record, why can't we talk about it here?
Call the court.
That's right. Yes.
I think so, yes. Let me just check if there's any more.
Well, I just want to clarify the calendar here. We're talking about how we can do this process, and it doesn't have to be a rush, but what we're running up against here, we started this process upon the submission of a resignation, at which point Counselor Driggs reviewed the process of the RFP for the new council, and advised that maybe we wanted to take more time with that than would be allowed if we were trying to hurry up and get somebody in here for the budget season. As part of that discussion, I suggested bringing in a, somebody to finish out the fiscal year, so we could take our time, step back, do the review of this, define this broad, this broad RFP, this broad role of the solicitor, define that some more, which will have an effect on potential candidates. If we, if we decide that we want to define that role in a certain way, it may affect what kind of candidates we look for, what we look for in a candidate. So that was, that discussion. Now we are here-
But who decided that?
Pardon me, I'm speaking.
But who decided it?
I was, we discussed it in open session. I provided the administrator-
We didn't vote on it.
I, we are, but we were, nobody objected to her reviewing this.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. Where were you been?
No, nobody objected to her reviewing the process.
Yes, we did.
I suggested this meeting, and I supplied the administrator with contact information from Mr. Chichioni that anybody could have availed themselves of. Now, the point of this is that this, in my mind, is part of the RFP process. And if you look at the calendar, what, I mean, item G2 here suggests that four of you begin this very important process without three, without a substantial minority of the council, which doesn't seem reasonable to me. So, hold on, so what we're suggesting, but if you're looking at the calendar here, you're looking for an Ethics Commission opinion, which can take up to two months, then you're looking at proceeding on an RFP process, which could take up to three months. So now we're into May, before we have, so this, as I'm saying, this is part of the RFP process. We will appoint Mr. Chichioni and his firm, and carry us through the next six months as we evaluate this process.
Justin, I don't agree with your math at all. And I'm sorry, when you say out loud, "We will appoint Mr. Chichioni," what that sounds like to me, to be honest, is an open, I mean, we will, is this a fait accompli? Because if it is, if this is a fait accompli, and the four of you have decided this outside of this, away from this council table, let's just tell everybody now.
You can play games with the words.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not playing games with the words, that's what you just said.
I'm expressing my view of how the process should go.
All right, let me, let me, let me, all right.
No, we, what I'm saying is, the process, the RFP process is part of the RFP process. We did this, we will now do this, and now we will go forward with the RFP process.
May I point out one, may I point out one more?
Let me suggest, I think, I think everybody's had a chance to speak.
No.
It's council.
I promised you, we will stay here all night till you all get to speak. The only thing I want to know is, does the council want to speak with the candidate first, or not? Because I have, I just, I have a feeling-
I don't want to be in this process. This process smells, Rob.
All right, so, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to open up to the floor, and what I'd like to, I'd like to suggest that the eight people that signed up, that have been patient, have speaking priority and would so wish to yield. And since we're now on an agenda, I think we can respond, we can't do the usual, you know, open forum, we can't respond. So, and you're free to speak on G1 or G2, we're not trying to cut them out, so I'm just going to down the list, is that okay?
And will you let other people speak after the ones that signed up?
Absolutely, I mean, until you adjourn, I, I know we won't make everybody happy, but I think we can at least add some clarity, okay? All right, so, Ms. Andrea Souza, please.
Andrea Souza, 22 South Avenue. First of all, I know you'd say you don't have a resume, however, you can go on to the candidate's law firm's website and pretty much read what she read, just so you know. And I understand that it is, as you have said, Mr. Katz, within the code of ethics. What I would like to know, and I think what many in the town would like to know, since you are a big proponent of transparency and ran on transparency, what exactly is your association with the candidate? And please explain it in detail, so we understand. And the other point I'd like to make is, I have spoken with many lawyers and a municipal judge, and even though you said you are withdrawing, which I will be happy to check tomorrow, as I will be checking the Rhode Island court records, and a municipal judge, it doesn't have to be a financial gain. If you are a plaintiff in a lawsuit, you have some gain, otherwise you wouldn't have brought the lawsuit. So therefore, per that, you have a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think what I'm going to do is, if you ask a question, we'll answer it. I'm not, if you have a question for the candidate, I'd like those to come through me, but, you know, I'm going to-
Mine obviously wasn't for the candidates, for Mr. Katz.
Yeah, so, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, so with regard to my acquaintance with Mr. Chichioni, it's a small state, people who are actively involved in politics and policy know each other.
Yeah.
So I've known Mr. Chichioni for a long time. He has, I worked for the Rhode Island Center for Freedom and Prosperity as a research director. He has contracted with my employer for specific legal issues supporting civil rights policy.
So have you two worked on any of your blogs together? Have you given him advice, or he given you advice, of calling to some of your blogs? And how come, and, and what makes him your choice candidate?
Well, as I stated when I raised his name several meetings ago, the idea here is to open up some space for us to review the solicitor process over the next six months. This is somebody I trust, and I know is a good lawyer in an excellent firm, and that seemed like a-
So we should just all go because you trust him, even though nobody else has any way to see anything about him, other than if we happen to go to his website? Just wanted to throw that out there, thank you.
And, what was the other, there was another question? Oh, having to do with the, the financial gain. Well, my position on that is, as I've articulated it online, if you go to tivertonfactcheck.org, it's in detail there. The, we're not, this action does not hire the attorney who will represent the town in any particular case. There are matters of refusal, there are matters of, pardon me, I'm responding to your question. Now, there are matters of recusal, as we just discussed, town council members have had lawsuits against the town, and they recused, and that was apparently fine then. So, choosing the solicitor is not, is not the same action. So even irrespective of the lack of financial gain, this decision is a broad decision for a position that has many responsibilities, and one particular lawsuit, which will not be, will not be coming to play, there's no action that would cause conflict, as I understand.
Unless it's been withdrawn, it is an active lawsuit.
So, do you mind, I want to, I, I don't disagree, and let's try not, try to use the microphone, and I, if, please reserve the opportunity for the candidate to explain that he is-
Not a candidate, not an official candidate.
It's a job interview.
Not a candidate. A handpicked selection. Sorry to shout.
What I'm trying to tell you, and he will confirm, is that he is not going to represent this town in any action where any counselor has an active litigation, okay? So for those of-
You want to see that?
It's in writing, so-
Have they seen it?
No, I haven't seen anything.
I don't know.
I don't even know if it's getting paid.
You have written documents, you have provided these people?
Does that mean that we're hiring-
We don't even know if he's getting paid to tell you the truth, and I don't know if they know.
This is the problem, right? You guys ask a question, I give you a good faith answer, and then you try to distract us from something else. So put it on the list, and we'll talk about it all night long. But for those of you, and I know that some of you have very reasonable questions, such as, are you guys about to hire a guy that's going to be working on a lawsuit that you're involved in? The answer is no. I just told you that. He said he's not gonna, and he said he's going to get an ethics advisory opinion, and I said the cases are dropped. So a lot of this, I think, is, is, you're not, like-
May I ask a, may I ask a clarifying question that might help? May I ask a clarifying question that might help? When you say the cases are dropped, or you're, they're not dropped yet, but you are, you are in the process of trying to do that, correct? I mean, it takes some time to withdraw a case, yes?
They're filed to be dropped, and so-
Okay. When you say, when you say they're being, they're filed to be dropped, but, I'm, I'm trying to ask a simple question.
Yeah.
It, there is some process, and it takes some period of time, because the court has to agree to drop the cases, correct?
Right, and this has happened before with other counselors, which is interesting, hasn't been raised before, but what will happen is-
Could I just get my question?
That not, not this candidate, if he's approved, or really any candidate approved by this council, will be involved in those wrap-up matters. So, Tricia, all of you can-
But, but if there are, okay, so if there are, if they're going to be supposedly withdrawn, now, and there's a reason, because there's a difference between your individually withdrawn, because there are other people who are still parties in those lawsuits, besides you. Yes? There are other named people who are parties.
Yes.
Right, and we're not going to be involved in them.
So you, okay, so-
So we're giving you every single thing you wanted, right?
So, no, 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 no. So I'm trying to actually ask a legitimate question here.
Okay.
Are the lawsuits, are you filing to completely withdraw the lawsuits, or are you withdrawing as litigants in the lawsuits? And the lawsuits will continue, but you will, at some point, withdraw as plaintiffs?
I am only speaking for myself, and for you here, with other plaintiffs too.
Okay, so, so the lawsuits may continue, the lawsuits would continue, but you as individual plaintiffs, and it would-
Maybe, I don't know.
Maybe.
Maybe. And if, if these lawsuits, if these lawsuits were to continue, and you're saying that any solicitor that you participated in hiring would not participate in those lawsuits, are you saying we'd have to go out and hire a special counsel separately to handle those lawsuits?
The suggestion is, we get the ethics advisory opinion, which you have asked for, before proceeding, so-
But not now.
We get the advisory opinion in order to address those concerns.
Well, I think the advisory should be before we hire this lawyer, because then now we're going to have to look for another lawyer.
Which, by the way, is consistent with the assistant solicitor's advice, the one that, so, okay, I want to get back to the-
Pete is not here to state that, so I don't think we should take that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Barbara Martin, 313 Neck Road. "I have great concern that the action to appoint the town solicitor by counselors Coulter, Driggs, and Katz poses a potential conflict of interest because they are current plaintiffs in litigation against the town. The only appropriate action is for the counselors Coulter, Driggs, and Katz is to seek formal opinions from the Rhode Island Ethics Commission prior to the selection of any town solicitor. Furthermore, these counselors should recuse themselves from any and all participation in this process until they have the Ethics Commission ruling." I do have a question. I would like you to, I would like you to clarify something which Counselor Hilton just brought up. Is it, do I understand that only you have withdrawn from a lawsuit, the other counselors haven't withdrawn from that lawsuit?
And I have to be very careful-
Well, be careful, be careful, they can answer for themselves.
What I can tell you is, on the, and it's a public record, is that the- What I can tell you is, on the, in its public record, is that the counselors on the council have withdrawn from the case. I am not, I can't speak for other plaintiffs, nor is it appropriate for me to do so. But what I've tried, what I've tried to do is make crystal clear that we've resolved the concern that, you know, you've raised.
Well, in the meantime, though-
And I've also made clear that if that case goes on, not from us, then Mr. Cision is going to get an advisory opinion, and I don't want to put Justin on the spot, but my understanding is, he, we would also.
Okay.
So I think we're trying to address every single concern that you've raised, and knowing that in the past, there have been suits against the town, and there have been, that's why we have a recusal process, that's why we have an ethics process. And, you know, so I think it's going to play out in a very reasonable way.
I do have a follow-up to that. Until the court has dropped all of this, then it's still pending, shall we say, and you are still participating then in the selection of a town solicitor, which seems to me that that's very ill-advised. You haven't really, until everything is written on the dotted line, that you are out of these cases, that they have been formally dropped, then you should not be participating in any of this.
But what I, what I thought I just said was, I would recuse from any activity on those cases, and so would the candidate, so there'll be no activity at all.
But you're talking about on these cases, what we are talking about-
I only say things five or six times in a row.
But how do you know that?
Wait a minute. What you're talking about is on these cases and recusal from these cases, but what I think all of us are talking about is that proper for you to be even entering into the selection of a town solicitor? Just the whole town solicitor process?
Right, and, and, and it's, it's-
And it's your opinion that, yes, sure, it's fine?
That if long as that solicitor has no activity on any of these matters, which by the way, have no financial interest-
I don't think that really has any bearing on it.
It has a huge bearing.
You've asked for my opinion on that.
Yes, well, I, I did, I did. Well, I think this, frankly, there used to be someone who used to come to the financial town meetings, and every once in a while, when he didn't like something, he'd say, "There's something that smells rotten in the town of Tiverton instead of in Denmark, and this really stinks."
I'm Bill McLaughlin.
Is that, did he yield? Okay, yep, okay, great, sir.
Most of you know who I am. It was funny, Ms. Tim Madras pointed out, Ms. Driggs seems to be the only one that interviewed this gentleman, nobody else on the council apparently even has his resume, and she's kind of right, it looks like backroom dealings, she ought to know, she's done a few, she'd recognize them. This whole thing is pretty simple. This process, just the optics of it, whether it's lawful or not, ethical or not, just the optics, is going to cost you, the council, the trust of the citizens here. So if you think bringing in your buddy there is, the town solicitor is worth losing the trust of the, of the citizens, none of you belong sitting there. That's just a plain fact.
I'm David Farnick, 90 North Court, and I speak to the accelerated selection of a town attorney, which many perceive as, in the vernacular, being railroaded. The choice of a lawyer with unknown experience in municipal matters, but who is, I understand, employed by an agency which also employs a town council meeting, who is joined with others in a lawsuit against it, withdrawn or not, against the town, gives the impression, and I'm going to use some rough language here, the impression of stacking the deck, double dealing, self-serving, and conflict of interest, betrayal of the public trust, try to continue. The town solicitor should be appointed on the basis of expertise, not on personal acquaintance or political philosophy. We would like to be confident that decisions of the town council are at the best interests of the town at heart, and that there is no possibility that justice can be compromised. I think there should be a rule, a town rule, that persons with legal cases against the town be recused from choosing the town's lawyer. Whether money is concerned is moot. Some things are more important than money, and a reputation is one of them.
Jennifer Rashley, citizen of Tiverton since 2000, and I'm currently on the Budget Committee. I'm truly encouraged by the town of Tiverton, by, certainly by the town counselors, your dedication to be here, and, and all the thankless work you do for us. And I'm so encouraged by everybody here. This is a town, we're here, we care about this, we care about our town. It's, it's the best part of local government. And I think we, we share a common goal, to keep this town a good place. With that said, the hiring of a new town solicitor is extremely important. It's a position that helps us lawfully guide the process of our town government with objectivity, fairness, and without bias. There are three town counselors recently elected that, according to our town paper, Mr. Coulter, Mr. Katz, Mrs. Driggs, Rob, Nancy, Justin, you're evading the regular process to find a town solicitor. And I, I don't know why. All three of you have cases against the town. This is a clear conflict of interest, to hire a known friend who will be representing our town at the same time each of you has a case against our town. Rob and Nancy, you're both lawyers, certainly, like, law school, your first semester of law school, don't you, don't you look at conflicts of interest? Isn't that one of the first things you do? Justin, you yourself have claimed that former council members have created the same kind of conflict of interest. Justin, why would you damn others for doing what you're proposing to do today? Why would you propose to hire a buddy who works for the same political organization that pays you? The Rhode Island Center for Freedom and Prosperity. You may work for them, but, but they don't, most certainly are not elected by the citizens of Tiverton, and they do not represent us. The three of you are intelligent, you're good-meaning, you're taking on this, this thankless civic job as town counselors, a position that should be one of consideration, fairness, and accessibility, but, but all that for all Tiverton citizens. It's supposed to be fair for all of us. Because all three of you have cases against the town, if you don't recuse yourselves from this selection of a town solicitor, you raise a flag of alarm, you signal to the citizens of Tiverton to not trust you. If your action as new town council members is to short-circuit due process for your self-interest, how are we to ever trust you if, to represent us on the town council from this point forward? Without recusing yourselves, you undermine your trust? Without recusing yourselves, you undermine your integrity? Without recusing yourselves, Rob, Justin, Nancy, you undermine your credibility. You are smart, you love this town, all of us love this town. Please, be the good people, I really believe that you are. Do the good thing that I really think you, that, that you, you ran for office for. That's all I have to say. I hope, I hope you will stand up and be the good people. You, you know what the right thing to do is.
Yeah, is it, I'm sorry, I'm a little trouble reading this one. On number six, is it Ms. Gishite?
Oh, it's me.
I'm sorry, yeah.
My name is Lisi Gishite, I live at 938 Lake Road. I've been there since 1991. I've been a member of the Rhode Island Bar for over 40 years. I'm the chairperson of the Ethics Advisory Panel. I was appointed by Chief Judge Sotell to sit in that role, and I'm also the chair of the zoning board. Preliminarily, I have to say, that I tried to find the agenda on the, the town's website and the Secretary of State's website, and I couldn't find it. The last meeting I saw was December 10th, that was listed, so I have a question about whether this meeting was even properly noticed under the open meetings law. But the second thing I have to say, I have great concern regarding the appointment of an interim solicitor. I have to say that in light of the fact that Mr. DeSisto has agreed to serve until we can find a replacement, there's no need to rush to judgment on picking somebody else, only to have the process repeated in a few months. That is a waste of time, it's a waste of your time, it's a total duplication of effort. I cannot understand why this council would not advertise for firms or individuals who are interested in being our town solicitor to submit RFPs, for you to review all of these submissions, to review their experience, their training, to interview them, and to select the most qualified lawyer that would represent the town. Why this procedure is being short-circuited is beyond my comprehension. And the fact that this meeting, or this part of the agenda began with a nomination for a lawyer that no one knows anything about is really insulting to the members of this town. I understand that, this, I reiterate what all of my predecessor speakers have spoken regarding the conflict of interest. I was a criminal lawyer for 31 years, or 41 years, and I would have just loved to have been able to pick my opposing counsel in all the cases that I handled. I feel like the public has been invited to a shotgun wedding. The damage has already been done. I don't understand why this council would not seek an advisory opinion from the Ethics Commission, given the fact that this is obviously gross, this question of conflict of interest is widely disputed by the town. It makes sense for you to do that. It is the best thing for the town, so that any future actions that you take will not be subject to collateral attack, not subject to lawsuits, which would only result in delays, extra expense to the town, and uncertainty, and lack of confidence in our elected officials. I have some substantive objections. I don't know Mr. Chacon personally, I've looked him up on the internet, and he has never served as a town solicitor, and, in my opinion, does not have the requisite experience to advise the planning and the zoning boards on very technical matters relating to land use, zoning, and engineering, which all of these boards deal with on a regular basis. This is a very specialized field, and there are a number of law firms and lawyers in this state that specialize in municipal law and handle exclusively municipal law and land use matters. Mr. Chacon could be the greatest lawyer in the world, I mean, I have no reason to question his competence, generally, but I see nothing that qualifies him to serve as the advisor to these town boards that are so critical to ensuring that Tiverton remains the town we all want it to be. Despite the fact that I've been a lawyer for longer than I would like to admit, I and members of the zoning board rely on our town solicitor for interpretations of ordinances, state statutes, and case law. I spend a lot of time, as do other members of our, of the board, researching these issues. And yet, despite the fact that I've looked at them and prepared them on my own time, we're all volunteers. I always have questions for Mr. DeSisto or Mr. Swark. This is not easy stuff, and we attend outside seminars to educate ourselves in these matters. But the pool of information in these various disciplines that we have to deal with is vast and sometimes unfathomable, and it's subject to different legal opinions. That's why I need somebody that knows what they're talking about, that can advise us to do our important job. I've had the privilege to work with three different solicitors' offices since I've been on the zoning board, Peter Roggero, Andy Tites, and Tony DeSisto. All of these firms had extensive experience in land use and municipal law. Because the litigation that we have presently pending takes a while to resolve, Mr. DeSisto has the institutional knowledge and the institutional memory to bring these cases to conclusion without added expense to the town. To hire a new attorney who is not well-versed in municipal law, past practices of this town, or knowledgeable of any of the particular facts of the litigation that's pending, does a tremendous disservice to the town and the litigants before the court and the various boards of this town. Further delays, which are inevitable with the change of council, does not serve this town well, and is prejudicial both to the town and to litigants. There is no reason for a new attorney to come here for a few months to reinvent the wheel, get paid whatever he's getting paid, which still hasn't been disclosed, when we have someone who's perfectly confident to handle these matters, until you have the ability to find what other lawyers are interested in this position, check their credentials, their experience, do interviews, check their references. That's what I submit your responsibility is to this town. It does our town no good to have an expedited procedure that only raises questions of conflict of interest and bias. It does our town no good to have a dissension and conflict with a new council right out of the box. So I urge you not to take any expedited action, but to seek an advisory opinion, so we all know that we're starting off on the right foot. I ask you to review the credentials of people who are interested in this job, and not to have one person decide, "I've interviewed him, and this is the guy for the job." I think that's insulting to us, and I sincerely ask you that you have anyone that is involved in any litigation, either as a plaintiff or a defendant, to recuse him or herself from even selecting the town solicitor, because that itself is a conflict, in addition to being part of, you know, having folks that, even if they've withdrawn from a lawsuit, will be advising and giving direction to the town solicitor on how to handle this. So for those reasons, I ask that you not expedite this, and send it out for an RFP and an ethics advisory opinion. Thank you.
Okay, so at least on my list, I have Ms. Kim Sutherland next. Stop followed by Mr. Stuart Gilpin.
Hi, Kim Sutherland, 199 Fury Ave. I just wanted to talk a little bit more about what one, what one of the gentlemen mentioned earlier about the optics of what this is all looking like, not just for the town council, but for our town as a whole. Regardless whether or not you think that you're 100% correct, and there's no issues with ethics or anything, your constituents are telling you that we have questions, and that we're asking you to please seek some advice from the Ethics Commission. The optics of, if that doesn't happen, is, like other people have mentioned, that people are going to lose faith in your ability to lead, and we don't want that. We want you to succeed, because you're elected, and you're representing our town, and we all live here and we love it. So we want you to do well, we're not hoping that you fail. What upset me, what upset me a lot, and it didn't happen until I got here, was that when this whole discussion came up, and we started, came up with the issue about, okay, Mrs. Driggs, would you like to make an opening statement? Mrs. Driggs, you didn't make an opening statement, you went right into asking for a vote. And I thought that that was very disingenuous to the process of an open government and having discussion. I really feel that it should have been just an opening statement, and you should have allowed everybody to talk about the pros and cons about hiring somebody right now, which, you know, I hope, I hope you're actually listening to the people who are coming up here and giving you these concerns, because it's not, it's- here and giving you these concerns, because it's not, it's not that we're angry that, you know, Mr. DeSisto is leaving, although we're disappointed. It's that we feel that the process isn't being followed, and that you're kind of going rogue, and, you know, going and doing something that, you know, I mean, not that everything is, everything that's different is not bad, but it seems like it's being done in secret. It seems like it's being done not in a really genuine way. It feels like it's being done secretively and for reasons that we're not quite sure of and you're not quite saying. So all I'm asking is that you please think about the optics, about how this looks, not just for the council, but how it looks for our town when it says that we're going to bring somebody new into a job who the entire council is not familiar with, who there's been no discussion about. Please just think about that, okay? Thank you.[655.04][655.04](Applause).
Hi there, Stu Gilfillan, 5 Highland Road. So I appreciate what Kim just said. It sort of dovetails into what I was thinking as well, you know, I think it seems that while we may have an ethical issue, we absolutely have an optical one. The optics of one councillor recommending a solicitor who's lobbied for his employer are not great, and the optics of a town council choosing not to get the opinion of an Ethics Commission before acting is, to put it mildly, interesting. Mr. Katz indicated on multiple social media posts that he sees no ethics violations in appointing a new solicitor, rather than following previously followed processes, and it appears to me that other councillors share his view. If your goal is for the taxpayers of Tiverton to have faith in your ability to be transparent and respect the public trust in your actions, I'd encourage you to think before you act. I would also say that I find it ironic that you just postponed approving the contract of a valued town employee in order to seek an outside opinion,[710.01][710.01](Laughter/Applause), but have no need for such an outside opinion with regards to appointing a town solicitor, which is a far more contentious matter. Additionally, councillor Griggs, I believe that the residents voted in a town council, not a counsellor. I find it reprehensible that you took it upon yourself, without involvement from your fellow councillors, to interview potential candidate. Reviewing the selection process and interviewing someone are completely different. Lastly, if you're also confident in your opinion to appoint Mr. Chichion or any candidate, would you be willing to resign your position on the town council if an Ethics Commission review found that there was an ethics violation? That's a question.
Well, I'd follow whatever instructions the Ethics Commission suggested as a remedy. I think it's limited to fines on a matter like this, but I'd certainly follow their recommendation.
Other councillors?
Same.
Okay. And last question, for those of you that are up here, have you seen the resume for Mr. Chichion? It sounds like the three over here have not, have the other four on the dais. I guess that's the right word. Seen his resume?
I have seen it. It's also my understanding that the town administrator has it, and it's also my understanding that that, the town administrator was going to be forwarding it to all the councillors.
So the administrator is not, have the other councillors up here seen his resume?
I'll let you respond, and then I'll jump in.
No, we didn't get it. Jan is saying he has not seen it.
Did you get it, Jan?
Did you get it?
No, I don't have his resume. I did receive something from Mr. Chichion, a draft proposal, and I suggested that perhaps it would be good to have a resume and/or a profile of this firm.
I misspoke. I did not get a resume, I got a draft proposal. Same thing, Mr. Brightsmo.
So you have seen it, have the other, the other three councillors here have not. Councillor Cook, have you seen it? The resume? No. Okay. Thank you for your time.
So I, I'm not going to jump in and defend anybody councillor up here, but when it does speak to the process, I do want to reiterate that this first came onto the agenda, I think, December 10th, which was two or three meetings ago, and my understanding is that all councillors were invited and encouraged to do their own research and study, which is exactly what happens on every single matter. That is how, I have seen, I've done my research on the public website. I happen to know it's the eighth largest firm in the state. I happen to know that it's a firm with something like two dozen lawyers, with expertise all over the place. So I'm, and I'm actually, I'm actually, you're hiring a firm? Now, well, I know, the single attorney wears the bullseye, but you're hiring a firm and a team, just like with Mr. DeSisto. Just like with Mr. DeSisto, we had the benefit of his, I believe, two associates, I might be, you're hiring a team. And so I, what I just want to make sure really clear on is that there's nothing wrong with an individual councillor reaching out to do independent research and study and communications. It happens all the time.
I talked to him.
And there's no allegation, there is no allegation that she attempted to speak for the, for the council. She is one vote.
Does the four of you, you can discuss this?
No, no, we have not, okay? So I'm familiar with the firm, but I have not interviewed the candidate, although I would like to shortly, okay? No, I'm trying, all right.
Mr. Coulter, the resume, or whatever document it is, is a public record. Where is it? And why isn't it provided with the agenda to the public? Or why isn't it posted online? Whatever that document is talking about.
My research is on the public website of that firm.
I'm talking about the document that you have been talking about for the past couple of minutes, which is either a resume or something that the town administrator is doing.
Should the speaker go to the microphone and introduce himself, as is the practice?
Okay, we should. I just wanted to be, I just wanted to be clear that this research is available on a public website, so.
But the document I'm asking about was a public record for this meeting, and it's not produced, it's not available.
All right, I'd like to ask the candidate to explain what was sent to the town administrator.
Not a candidate. Not a candidate.
Okay, so let's, these are the eight folks that have signed up, so.
You don't want to be a candidate if there's an interview that's been posted. This person is not a candidate, sir. It's grump. It's grump. There's a line over here.
Okay. Okay. Okay, it's still an open floor. Did you speak once already, though?
I did, but I was trying to say it.
Is that, if it's okay with, if it's okay with those behind you, that's fine.
Who is number eight? Are they in the room?
Who's the eighth name on the list?
Stu just spoke. I think we're all, I think we're good through the eight, so I'm going to keep going, yeah. I mean, as long as the folks behind you are okay with coming up second time.
I'll be quick, because I don't need, this is Patty Sousa-Cooper again, 18 Beech Ave, and I think it's important that we say who we are and where we're from in Tiverton. I'm not going to reiterate everything that's just been said. We certainly had an expert over there that is far more versed in this than I. I am an oncology palliative care hospice nurse, so I do assess people for a living. So there's been a lot of assessing going on in my head, watching this group, and it's kind of disturbing to me that this is our town council. Whether or not this lawyer is the lawyer for us, maybe he is, maybe he isn't, don't know, but this is the process that is in place, and he hasn't applied. You said you interviewed. You don't even have an application to interview the guy with. You researched him online. This is all very willy-nilly. These guys don't have any information on him, we don't have any information on him. He might be the guy for the job, but this presentation of our town council in Tiverton is so disturbing to me, because this, right now, I don't trust any of you. Right now, I do not trust a single soul, because I don't know what to believe. I feel like we've been given a lot of lip service. I feel like there's been a lot of circle talk. I feel like, you know, you're getting caught in a trap, so you're saying one thing, this, that. I don't even proclaim to know the ins and outs of how politics work, or what the laws are. It's not what I do. I could take care of you till, all day long, but I do not do that. That's what you do. I trust that you're going to know how to do it. I don't trust that you know how to do it. That's how I feel right now. After this night, after this meeting, after coming in here, is this an agenda that wasn't approved by the town council? It seems like it got sent to the town council, am I right? It got sent to you guys. Robert Coulter clearly approved the agenda. It says we're going to consider a vote, or a vote of engagement on this attorney and other candidates, but that's not what was presented. What was presented was the four of you with a preconceived agenda of getting this attorney elected, or hired, to be the town solicitor. That's the feeling in the room. This does not evoke trust. I don't trust any of you right now. Sorry about that, but that's what you've done for me. So now this is my town council in my town of Tiverton. Do not trust a single one of you. I probably trust a couple of you guys more than I trust the four of you, okay? All right? So, you know, they're open, they're transparent, you might not agree with them, but they're open and transparent. I don't feel that way about all four of you sitting there. So I'm very sorry that that's how, what has happened, but this is scary for me. This is one issue. This is a big one. We need a town solicitor. You know, we're losing a good one. This is big, but what happens next? Every single thing that we're going to have to vote on, every single thing that we're going to have to decide in Tiverton is going to have this happen? Because this is like a playground, this is like a fight on a playground. This is seven people that cannot even have a reasonable discussion, cannot even have the proper format of a, of a meeting, it would seem. So I'm disturbed by this. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.[1252.42][1252.42](Applause).
My name is Susan Scanlon. I live on Bracket Avenue. I've been, I was born in this town, or just nearby at St. Anne's in 1966. Graduated from Tiverton High School in 1984, where I learned reading, writing, arithmetic, French, Spanish, lots of things, and a good deal of common sense. I thank you for your service. I thank you for your citizenship and attending this evening. I wasn't planning to come. It was about six o'clock, I was reading the Secan at Times, and I was reading the letters to the editor about the present and the future of this town, and then there was one letter talking about things that, ancient history, so, you know, we get bogged down in the past. We'd like to be in the present and the future. I regret that I'm not prepared. As I said, it was just about six o'clock that I decided to come, so I very quickly got online, tried to find the posting for the position of which we're discussing, and I couldn't find it online, so I'll try that again later tonight. And while I've been here, I just took a couple of notes, and when councillor Hilton mentioned the appearance of impropriety, I think it's quite obvious to many of us here that some of you are twisting yourselves in knots to try to explain why this is not the appearance of impropriety. So I just think that the right thing to do is to defer to the Ethics Commission. I might not have the great legal mind of councillor Driggs, or Coulter, or comrade Katz, but again, I do have common sense. And I know some of you are more interested in listening to us than others. I mean, some of you don't even look at us when we speak to you, our elected officials. Common sense, this is a conflict of interest, you should defer to the Ethics Board. You should not rush through this decision that none of us have any preparation for. Perhaps you keep talking about a meeting on December 12th, or 10th, or whatever the case was, but if half of the council has not received the proper information on the candidate, how can they make a decision? And some of you are nodding that, yes, you have the information, some of you don't, some of you interviewed, some of you spoke, you know, so all seven of you should have the proper information. You shouldn't have to be looking for it on your own, you should have consistent information to make the vote on the best welfare of our town. And one of our fellow citizens made the comment that I also wrote down, that, I'm paraphrasing here, but I think President Coulter said something about, "We want to take a second look to make sure that we do it right," regarding a longtime town employee who all of you seem to support, but just want to, you know, check the editing there. But yet, you, you don't even want the councillors to have the information to take a first look at their credentials. So you want to take a second look and more looks at a longtime employee, and yet you want the board to make a decision without all of the facts. So I do have questions for some of you.
Councillor Perry, do you have a lawsuit against the town?
Not currently, no.
Councillor Hilton, do you have a lawsuit against the town?
No, I do not.
Councillor DeMeaders, do you have a lawsuit against the town?
No, I don't.
Councillor Cook, do you have a lawsuit against the town? Councillor Driggs, do you have a lawsuit against the town?
I'm withdrawn.
Speak up to the mic, please.
Sorry, I have withdrawn as plaintiff, no. Is the lawsuit you filed currently active against the town? I am now no longer a plaintiff in the lawsuit that I filed.
Councillor Coulter, do you have any lawsuits against the town?
I think we've already explained that those cases are dropped.
Do you have a lawsuit against the town? I'm not, you said, let's be civil and non-condescending. Do you have a lawsuit against the town, sir, or not?
Inpractical, no.
Okay. And councillor Katz, how many lawsuits do you have against the town?
Is it, so we're being, we're not being condescending, so is it councillor or comrade Katz? I'm not sure. You call me two things.
You choose, sir. How many lawsuits do you have against the town?
The lawsuit's been filed for withdrawal, with dismissal.
Mm-hmm. How many of you have common sense here? Come on, do the right thing. If you're twisting in knots about the Ethics Commission, do the Ethics Commission before you're in a position to have to turn to the Ethics Commission.
You're saying about secrecy and transparency, we've let you come up here and take shots at us.
I didn't say secrecy.
For two hours, okay? So we don't need to, we don't need to insult Mr. Katz, okay? Can I ask him a question?
I didn't insult him. I asked him how many lawsuits he has against the town. You folks file.
Calling him a comrade is very insulting. I don't think that was very nice.
How come? Why is that? A comrade in Spanish is friend.
That's how he made me feel.
Excuse me, I'm not finished. I would like to also point out that when you folks have a propensity to file lawsuits against the town, that costs us money, that goes into the pocket of the folks who are going to be defending us. So I mean, it just doesn't make sense that you hire your opposing council, okay?
Did you not hear me when I said?[1569.33][1569.33](Laughter).
I didn't hear you. What did you say? Oh no, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. What did you say?
I feel like I've said it three times, so the cases are dropped. We are not, the candidate is not going to represent the town in them, so we are not hiring opposing councils. Can we be clear about that?
Apparently not, because to all of us, that's the appearance of impropriety.
So who's representing the town in those lawsuits?
The suggestion is that you four can go figure it out, and he can get an ethics opinion, and if you need to appoint, if you need to appoint a special councillor, a special council, you can, but the cases are.
So the taxpayers are going to repay for three lawyers in a year.
Yeah, we're appointing opposing.
Four lawyers.
Well, stop suing the town, okay?
The town should follow the law. Right?[1624.15][1624.15](Applause). I want to let everybody speak, but I really hope you hear the words we're saying. Mr. Burke?
Mike Burke, 67 Durfee Road, and also Chairman of the Tiverton Democratic Town Committee for All Transparency, and my comments are both mine and that of my committee membership. Just, I didn't note this, but just standing here, listening to this last back and forth, it's kind of like, you know, growing up, I, my brother would be slapping me around, and, you know, all of a sudden, my mom catches him, and, "Okay, Mom, I'm not going to do it anymore, don't worry. Don't worry, it's done now, okay? I stopped doing it." Doesn't make sense. So let me ask you a question. Ms. Hilton, there was a comment before about documentation, resumes and the like not getting to council members. What has been your practice when you've, that you've used when putting an item on the agenda for, for a vote, in terms of providing backup documentation?
I try the best I can to have the backup documentation to the town clerk. She prefers by Thursday, so that it can be in everybody's packet and be posted online. I will admit that occasionally, on an item that, you know, isn't of enormous consequence, I've been occasionally late with my documentation, so I will fess up to that. But on something that is significant, I try really hard to have all the paperwork out to everybody and in the town clerk's hands by Thursday.
Mr. Perry, would you say the same for yourself?
Yes, same.
Ms. DeMeaders?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Now, Mr. Coulter, you suggested that you did your own research, and there's information available on a public website. Is that the Tiverton Town website?
No, no, I just meant to say that it's custom and practice that all councillors do their own individual research and study.
You also said that the members of the community should have to go searching to a public, what was that website?
No, 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 no. I was asked a question about the availability of a resume and whether I reviewed it. What I did review is what is publicly available on the law firm website. That's all I said, nothing more.
So, Ms. DeMeaders, didn't you say earlier that you also looked on a website? But would you consider that proper documentation?
No, because it's not his resume, it's not his experience, it's what the law firm offers, but it's not an individual experience.
Kind of like marketing.
I have never, like, I've been through this process. Every lawyer comes in with a full resume and references, and we've never hired anyone without checking their references and talking salary. I don't even know what we're paying this man.
So Ms. Driggs states that So, Ms. Driggs states that she has seen the resume. Nobody else stated that they have seen the resume. I'm sorry, you did state that. You did state that. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I clarified that it was, it was his proposal.
You did state that. You did state that. So I'm appalled that you did not provide the resume, or the proposal to the town clerk, to provide it to everybody else. Because that's the proper procedure. Even if he had it, the proper procedure's through the town clerk. So, anyway, let's go on. Some people have made some of the items that I've talked about, and I appreciate that. I wanted to talk about. There are clear conflicts of interest between this attorney and several members of this council, including Mr. Katz on several fronts. Now, Mrs., Ms. Driggs' motion was to hire Mr. Chichioni. So, I did not hear a motion to hire a firm. I heard a motion to hire an attorney. The last contract we had, councilors, and I'm looking at the three of you, what was the contract? Who was the contract with?
The Desisto-
The Desisto firm, okay, thank you. And looking at that public website of that firm, there's specialty areas: corporate and business law, banking and finance, securities, trusts and estates, litigation, okay, maybe, bank and reorganization, healthcare, well, if we have some healthcare issues, we can deal with those, communications and technology, employment law, commercial real estate and public finance. I don't see anything about town matters. So, what is the rate that we're hiring this person at?
We can ask him, but my understanding-
No, I'm asking you, what is the rate we're hiring this person?
Yeah, yeah. Right. But based on the, the engagement contract draft that I have seen, it's the same, it's consistent with the same budget.
I have a real problem with certain members seeing this and not other members. This is-
The town administrator has it. No, no, you've seen an engagement contract draft?
That's the town administrator.
A draft. So, and again, I want to, I want to talk about, again, the context here, right? So-
No, I, I, excuse me, I asked, what is the rate? What is the rate?
There is, it's, it's the same rate as it currently is. So there's-
Which is?
Whatever the current rate is for general representation is something like $96,000.
Okay. $96,000 for six months?
Annual.
Annual, okay. So what is the length, what is the length of the contract?
Again, the proposal here is for an interim until June 30th.
That wasn't the motion?
That was the motion.
I have a problem with the proposal being read that none of the councilors seen.
I agree.
I really do. This is an open meeting violation.
So, Mr. Katz suggests this is part of the RFP process. However, Mr. Katz also stated in this meeting that a decision hasn't already been made to hire Mr. Chichioni. So there's nothing you can say that convinces me, or I think most people in this room, that Mr. Katz, Mr. Coulter, Ms. Cook, and Ms. Driggs have not already blatantly violated the Open Meetings Act by conversing about this outside of this meeting, whether that be in person, or by email, or text, or any other form.
That is not what I said. I said, in the context of describing the process-
If this action is approved, it is clear that the four members of this coun, those four members of this council lied to the voters when you told voters that you believe in transparency and good government. Thank you.
Good evening. Richard Rahm, 27 Cornell Road. I'm a citizen. I'd like to just review, Ms. Driggs, you introduced Mr. Chichioni, and did you also motion to hire?
Correct.
So you did both. And there was not a second?
Yes, there was a second.
There was a second?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're in the, to the discussion phase.
Correct.
All right. It, it does appear that not enough information was shared prior to the meeting. So, I would ask that you continue it to the next meeting, and they can all look. In fact, maybe they would like to nominate. I'm sure they have ideas on who to nominate. It would have been nice had we discussed the candidate's background. We haven't discussed that at all. We've gone on probably an hour and a half, and I don't know anything about him. I'd, I'd like to know about him. And I think that's, this is a good conversation, you know? I would also like to say that the politics in the room didn't get any of you four elected. All right? So there's a whole other body of electors out there that are going to see things differently. All right? A lot of them.
They're not here. Where are they? Where are they?
I just told you where they are. They are not here. All right? And they elected you. They elected you to do a job. You got into that position because of them, because of what you said you would do. And I appreciate what you're doing. I really do. I also appreciate these other three over here. They didn't, they, the, the people that voted for them are not the people that voted for you. We, I know, I know, all you got to do is find one. And I'm wrong, right? But it's a statement about a, a group of people. And whenever you make a statement about a group of people, it's funny, you can never apply it to a single one, because that's the way statistics work. So, I would ask you to, to consider continuing this. And I, I understand, you know, the, there was a woman from the Ethics Board that got up and spoke. She spoke very eloquently. And I've seen this, and I'll, I'll try to be short. I've seen this in my career, where they say, "Oh, you should follow the procedure, follow the procedure, follow the procedure." Well, you know what? If I followed the procedure, I'd never get anything done. I would never get to my deadlines. You have to expedite, because Mr. Desisto wishes to resign. All right? So we need you to expedite. And I think you're doing it, so, so, you know, because you skipped the, the process of, that was once used, you don't have to use it.
Absolutely.
I think that's a prudent move.
Mr. Rahm, could I characterize, you know, respond to some of what you've said. I, I find it conspicuous that the councilors who objected did not ask to speak to the counselor.
Yeah.
And that is consistent, in my view, with a strategy not to pursue. So, this issue came up, this issue came up in December, on December 10th. A name was given at the next meeting with information provided to the administrator to distribute, if he didn't, contact information is available publicly. So they, the opportunity has been given to, to ask the, to pursue information on a candidate. That was not done. And then he's here and has not been asked to speak. So-
I need to say something. I need to say something.
Value of continuing a meeting where the appearance, to me, is that the intention is to delay. And if you look at G2, the appearance is actually to deprive three of us of participation in the RFP process for up to two months, which could take, be the entire RFP process.
I want to say something. I need to say something. First of all, I never, I, yes, well, I'm addressing the audience, because I have never approved of this process. You guys suggested this process. I did not feel that this was appropriate. I felt we needed to go to RFP and get multiple candidates. We said that continuously the last meeting, and that's why I didn't call this counselor, because I do not approve of this process and do not want to actually participate in this process, because it's wrong. And that's why I did not call that lawyer. And I think I can speak for Trish, that I feel she, felt the same way.
Exactly.
Well, that's just your opinion.
Well, this is your opinion, Donna.
And we're agreed. And mine is that we need to expedite it, because Mr. Desisto has asked that he wants to leave. So your opinion is just one opinion.
No. No, I don't really think that's true.
Does that answer, answer your suggestion that we continue the meeting? I mean, would that be preferable at all? I mean-
Why can't we go out for RFP this evening?
Because, because of what I just said.
And if you don't think there's an, if you're-
It needs to be expedited.
Okay.
So expediting is hiring someone we don't know? We don't know his potential-
RFP is not necessary, but it is your opinion that you would like it, so you're one vote.
What?
So, what I'd like, what I'd like to-
I'd like to say something since my name was mentioned.
Let me, so, let me-
Quiet in this room!
I'd like to, I'd like to let Counselor Hilton comment, and then the other gentleman that's been waiting. And then I think we should let the candidate have a few minutes, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Not a candidate. Not a candidate.
Okay.
This is not an interview.
Not a candidate. There's no jobs that have been posted. You shouldn't even come here. How can you post a candidate?
I should, I'm sorry, I should use the word, I guess, applicant.
You've got to stop the word candidate.
Do you have it?
No application. No application. You can't be a candidate.
I would, folks, 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 I would, I would like to clarify something here. When this first came up, we didn't, all seven of us agree on this process. Three of us thought we should have an RFP. Four of you didn't. We maintain our, Donna, I have the floor, so if you'll just let me finish, please. So we didn't agree on this process, number one. Number two, I would never, ever see a name of, of, I don't even know what, what you would call this, because it's not an applicant, because we don't have a posted job for anything. It's not a candidate. We haven't posted anything, so I'm not sure. But I would never overstep my role as a counselor and call someone who was to come in front of us for an interview and presume that I could do that individually. It's not, I mean, I'm not sure whether to the letter of the law, but I actually think at some level it's a violation of the policy. We're supposed to act as, as one, as a body. We're not supposed to, for example, go off and meet with developers individually, nor should we, I believe, be calling someone who's interested in a position without the blessing of the rest of the council, without-
Hadn't even been advertised.
It hasn't even been advertised. I mean, I would never do that. So to position that as somehow that I wasn't interested enough, or too lazy, or whatever you want to call it, or that I had two weeks and I could have called this guy, I would never, ever have done that without the blessing of the council and without us all agreeing we were going to do that. I don't think I would have. We're supposed to act as a body. If we're going to interview somebody and we're going to talk to somebody, it should be done as a group. Individual counselors should not be going off running their own interviews. So I simply wouldn't have done it. I've never received anything other than a, an agenda, which came out on whatever day it was, Friday, with an agenda with a name on it. That is the only official notification that I have had of, of this gentleman's name. Now, you know, can I go Google on the internet? Sure. But that's not, you know, that's not how you hire somebody. It, it, it isn't. So. And I'd like to say something else. If all of us called him and interviewed him, that's a row and quorum. We didn't do it as seven of us. So we couldn't have done that even if we wanted to do that.
Okay.
It is a row and quorum when you all separately interview a man, and we don't hear all of, all the answers.
I want to note that Mr. Chichioni's name was, was presented in an open forum. That's an official forum, and we, we scheduled this meeting specifically to address his hiring as a solicitor.
And you did a lot of other things in between.
Okay, so I'd like to let this gentleman speak, and then I'll see if-
I'm not staying for any interview.
...
My name is George Azayback, 63 Stony Hollow, Tiverton, Rhode Island. I just want to take you down the road a little bit. I'm a member of the zoning board. Lisi is the chairman of our board, and I'm very proud to have her as chairman, because she came up here and represented us very nicely. So I'm going to tell you something happened two months ago at the zoning board. I know you guys, I know if you don't know, you know it. You select us to go on the board, right? So we had an incident on the board with me personally two months ago. It required me to call Lisi and say, "What am I supposed to do with this? Somebody attacked me at the station, has to do with a, you know, it's an application." And she said, "Well, we could apply to the Ethics Board, get an opinion from them, might take a couple of months." I said, "That will cost the town time, money. I could stay and vote. This guy could appeal it. Lawyers make money. We don't want to give him any more money than he got." So let's say I took it as a personal, or took it as, to my gain, to be a tough guy and sit on that board, and listen to the petitioner, and voted yes or no, against him or with him. And I came two months later here for you to appoint me, knowing that I did not wait for the Ethic Commission opinion. Would you have put me back on that board? Yes, yes, yes. Oh, four of you. Oh, five of you. I'm asking a question. Would you have put me back on that board if I caused the town money for a lawsuit, the guy appealing the opinion, knowing that I know personally, I know between my heart, that I should recuse myself, because I, that guy created a conflict for me to be able to vote?
And Judge, you did recuse yourself.
I recused myself. I did not wait for the Ethic Commission, because it's the right damn thing to do for the town. Okay? And what's the question? The question for you is very, Mr. Coulter, I'm sorry, I'm boring you. A question for you specifically. Would you appoint me back to the zoning board if I did not follow and recuse myself?
I'm having trouble understanding the hypothetical, and you're not boring me, I assure you. I'm just-
I know, it's got to be my English, sorry. I think everybody in this room understood exactly where I'm going. It's got to be my English. And by the way, I know you supporters all work all day, come to some of the people here to support you.
So am I, for 14 hours today. And I'm here to represent the town. Thank you.
I don't want to be, I'm not going to cut this meeting short. I, I, I'd like Mr. Ciccione to, if he's willing to come forward. Is he, is he, is he here?
There isn't even a shot posted. Why is he being?
Who is this? Who is this guy?
Is he a resident?
Okay. Can we, could you come forward, please?
Trish, please. Um, Rob, Mr. President, I'd like to say something. Go ahead.
Why don't we, why don't we take a five-minute stretch break? This administrative reset's we're going to start in five minutes.
Well, can Trish say something first?